Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation provided by Councilman Goldberg, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Troop Number Seventeen from Driver.
Let us pray. Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of our meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard and that we will have a mindset of understanding. May everyone be engaged and involved, and may all concerns be addressed as best we can. May all of us present tonight take mind of the Thanksgiving season, giving blessings to all with support to the ones that have not. Heavenly Spirit, we thank you for all of your guidance, support, and love for all of your people. In your name we pray, and let us all say amen.
Troop Seventeen, will you come up first? Sixteen, I got you. I promoted you from sixteen to seventeen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic whose strength is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop Sixteen. We'll now move to our Freedom of Information Act certification, which is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
Our resolution certifying the closed meeting of November the seventeenth, 2021 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is ordered. Counsel? Councilman Williams?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Williams. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you.
Second, Mayor Bennett, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett,
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg, Councilmember Johnson,
Yes.
Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Williams,
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
Yes.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the May nineteenth, 2021 work session and regular meeting. A motion would be in order. Pleasure with counsel. Councilman Fawcett?
Moved to approve, Mayor.
Councilperson Butler Barlow, my second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow,
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett,
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg,
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson,
Yes.
Councilmember Ward,
Yes.
Councilmember Williams,
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
Yes.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have one special presentation this evening concerning an update on the HURBS Utility Bill Pandemic Relief Program. Mr. Manager, please present it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Paul Rattell, Director of Public Utilities, will provide the update on the HURBS pandemic relief program.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Intention of this presentation is give you a status check on the three phases of the HURBS Utility Bill Pandemic Relief Program. And if you recall, the intent of this program was to provide our customers, our utility customers, with relief if they have experienced hardship through the COVID pandemic. This also is the first item on the consent agenda, which is the accept and appropriate for the Phase Three grant funding that we're due to receive very shortly. So just in review, Phase One, and if you recall, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three are really terms that the Department of Public Utilities has assigned to these programs just to assign unique names to each one of the programs to track them. Phase One program kicked off in August of 2020. The program closed almost a year ago, December eleventh of 2020. The funding source was the CARES Act, and the available funding at that time that was carved out for that program was $500,000. We received 244 applications. Of those 244, 160 of them were approved, and the total amount of assistance that was granted was just a little bit over $74,000. Phase Two of the HURBS program was one that just really ran for really almost this entire year, just recently closed out. If you recall, this is the one where we received a really significant share of grant money. Kicked off in December of last year, we just closed it in September seventh. The reason for that closure date is any unused funds that localities had had to be returned. The grant funding that we received was just a little bit over $1.3 million. The funding source again was the CARES Act. The good story here, the success story really, is that all of that grant funding that we received was distributed. Every dime went to our customers to assist with their utility bills. We received just under 3,000 applications. The number of payments who replied were just a little bit over 2,000. And then subtracting out some expenses for door tags and things like that, notifications, worked out to about $678 for the average amount of assistance. And if you recall, on the Phase Two program, different than the Phase One program, Phase Two, a customer had to attest to between one and nine questions as to how they were impacted by the pandemic. Health and Human Services staff did a great job in partnership with our customer service staff in taking those attestations and doing the intake on it. And that's how we recorded those as far as recording the impact that an individual account had from the pandemic. So moving on to Phase Three, so this is the relative, this is the new program, new relief program. The funding source, a little bit different. It's the American Recovery Plan Act, so the ARPA money. Received notification about a week and a half ago that we'll be receiving $1.28 million. And again, this program's a little bit different than the other two. So the funds are apportioned to each locality, including ours, based on account arrears as of August thirty first of this year. So that's how they, the Commonwealth took a look at our accounts, and that's how they determine the $1.28 million. Very similar to what they did in, for Phase Two. We must distribute the funding by February twenty eighth of, actually, 2022.
Yeah.
Unused funds returned also by March thirty first of 2022. Sorry for the dates in there, the years, rather. So eligibility, how does this work? Little bit different than Phase Two. Phase Three is for residential customers only, not for industrial and commercial accounts. And that's by the guidelines and the rules of the grant. So this would apply to accounts and arrears over 60 days as of August thirty first. Those are the accounts that are eligible. And the grant rules state that the arriage, if you have an arriage on an account as of August thirty first of this year, it actually implies that you've been impacted by COVID. So what that means is, is that there's no required individual attestation similar to what was done for Phase One and Phase Two. So what will occur here is, once we receive the grant money, we'll be, take, customer service staff will be taking a look at each individual account, and assistance will be applied directly to the customer accounts. So how does that work? Rough formula. So we have a residential customer A. It's got an arriage balance over 60 days. That's divided by all the arrears that we have over 60 days as of August thirty first. Multiply that by the grant funding that we receive. That's the $1.28 million, and that would equate to the individual customer arriage reduction. So still a good amount of money out there to assist our customers with. Phase Two, again, very, went very well. Didn't have to return any money there, and I would expect that we would do the same on this, where we would not have to return any funds with this. With that, I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rattell. Council questions? Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir. A couple of comments. I want to commend your department for pushing out the funding of 1.3 in the first round. You know, that's a significant amount of money, and I'm sure that it helped a lot of our citizens here in Suffolk. With that being said, you get the 1.2 that's coming up on you, and I know it came kind of quick. But, you know, I'm hoping this is for, like, residential customers, and my hope is that we can reach maybe some of those really underserved customers and homes that are out there to relieve some of their, their debt so that they can continue to get the good service we have here in Suffolk. So you stated it. I'm going to hold you to it, that it should be zero pennies come March of '22 when this is over and done. You got to find a way to get rid of every dime of it. That's my pet peeve. I hate to see anything go back. We got it, let's spend it, you know? So if we don't, it goes back, and then somebody else is going to have an advantage of where it might end up. So thank you and your staff. I know you haven't identified customers yet, because it's probably too soon to do that. But I'm sure you guys are on the hunt now to start looking at some of that and assist anybody and everybody that's qualified that you can. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, you know, I hope our citizens take advantage of this program. As Councilman Fawcett said, it's almost $1.3 million. Keep in mind, I think you said the claims need to be in by February twenty eighth. And also, if you could, may just let us know or explain how you're going to contact some of our customers now, as far as utility customers that are behind, how you plan on contacting them, and let them know about the program.
Well, I can clarify that. Really what it is, it's even simpler than that. It's essentially what it is. It's our customer service staff taking a look at the records in the billing system of anybody that was in arriage as of August thirty first. Taking a look at that, you're still eligible, even if you received assistance in program number two, Phase Two. And the contact with the customer will be, there will be a note on their bill that assistance had been applied to their bill.
So in essence, instead of a cutoff notice, they're going to get a notice to fill out the form for?
There's not even, there's not even an application form.
There's not anything?
It's automatic.
Oh, it's automatic. So you're going to be taken?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay. Well, to that point, it's all going to go away. I'm confident.
It's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Rattell.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, then a motion to adopt the entire agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion. Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow,
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett,
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg,
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson,
Yes.
Councilmember Ward,
Yes.
Councilmember Williams,
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
Yes.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
There are no agenda speakers at this time.
Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Recovery Plan Act to assist with utility customer relief. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate community flood preparedness funds from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a justice assistance grant from the United States Department of Justice in support of the Suffolk Police Department in office of the Commonwealth's attorney. Item number ten, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the cemetery fund restricted fund balance for maintenance and improvements at Holly Lawn Cemetery. And item number eleven, an ordinance to amend Section sixty-six dash three-three-seven of the code of, of the code of the City of Suffolk pertaining to residency requirements.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, item seven, of course, is in support of the utility pandemic relief program, which Paul or Mr. Rattell just briefed you on. That's accept and appropriate to $1,282,391.67, and there is no local match to that. Item eight, the city has received $68,024 in community flood preparedness funds from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The funds will be used for the development of planning and capacity building to include staff training and resilient plan development related to flooding. Adoption of the ordinance will increase consolidated grants fund budget revenues and expenditure by $68,024. A local match of $22,675 is required and is available within the FY twenty-one twenty-two stormwater operating budget. Item nine, the city has received $35,013 through the justice assistance grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. Excuse me. The $29,761.05 will be used by the Suffolk Police Department for training and equipment, and the remaining $5,251.95 will be used by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for postage and supplies. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the consolidated grants fund budget revenues and expenditures by $35,013, and no local match is required. Item ten is for the appropriation of $115,000 from the cemetery fund restricted fund balance for maintenance and improvements at the Holly Lawn Cemetery, including stormwater pipes and road repairs. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the cemetery fund account by $115,000. Item eleven, amend Section sixty-six thirty-three, sixty-six three thirty-seven, excuse me, of the city code by requiring new hires of directors, deputy city managers, chief of staffs, and city council appointees to become Suffolk residents with two years from the date of their hire. The ordinance is retroactive till January first, 2021.
Counsel, are there any questions about the items? Councilman Fawcett?
No, Mayor, but I would like to go ahead and move for approval as it's been presented.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
I would like to have item eleven voted on separate.
What we, Mr. City Attorney, I think, have we passed that process?
So you have passed that process, but you, City Council is free to amend the rules. It just requires more than a majority vote, or require a two-thirds vote.
Okay. So for Vice Mayor to now call for a separate vote at item eleven, which should have been done before we approved the consent agenda, would require a motion to do so, and you say a two-thirds vote?
Yes, because we are now amending the rules.
To amend the rules. So we would need a motion to allow that. Do we have a?
I'll make that motion that will allow me to vote on item eleven separate.
Okay. Vice Mayor has made a motion to amend the rules to allow him for a separate vote on item eleven. Is there a second?
No.
Councilperson Butler Barlow is second. So we have a motion and a second. So any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Butler Barlow,
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett,
No.
Councilmember Goldberg,
No.
Councilmember Johnson,
No.
Councilmember Ward,
No.
Councilmember Williams,
No.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
Yes.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion fails by a vote of three to five, with Councilmembers Fawcett, Goldberg, Johnson, Ward, and Williams voting in opposition.
Okay. Are there any other questions concerning the consent agenda items? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor, I already made a motion. I'll make a remotion.
Exactly right. Councilman Fawcett with the motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Johnson?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow,
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett,
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg,
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson,
Yes.
Councilmember Ward,
Yes.
Councilmember Williams,
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
No.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
It will now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Shoulders Hill Road Multi-Use Path Project. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, will provide the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. This is the first of a number of meetings that we, we, Public Works, will be bringing to you as we have these types of projects that are actually moving into the next phase. The one tonight is a multi-use path that's going to be on Shoulders Hill Road. This has been in the works for a while. The purpose of this path is, again, to install a path out there to accommodate both pedestrians and other modes of traffic, such as bicycles, to and from the communities up and down Shoulders Hill Road, back towards the Bennett's Creek Park Road, and ultimately towards the park, the library, the treasurer's office, et cetera. One of the requirements of this project is we do have to acquire some easements, and we do have to require right away from one property owner. This project, being a small project, again, did not have a lot of impacts. In this particular project, we utilized the method called posting of willingness, which means we reached out to the community. We told them that we were doing this project and asked for any, any responses we may get. We did get just a few responses. We were able to address all of those responses, and we did not get a formal request from any citizen asking that this project not have a public hearing, not go through the posting of willingness. So that's where we're at in front of you tonight. Again, as I noted, this is, this is the first phase of what should be a multiple-phase project as we expand the facility along Shoulders Hill Road. So it starts at the intersection there at Bennett's Creek Park Road. It crosses the highway to the, I think this is the eastern side of Shoulders Hill Road, proceeds south, and it goes to the next intersection. There is an existing sidewalk there, and we're expanding that out to go from a five-foot sidewalk to a 10-foot multi-use tra, trail. It makes the connection to Deerfield. And again, ultimately, this trail will continue on with our ultimate goal to get it down to where we connect to the Seaboard Coastline Trail. But we're starting to make the connectivity to these neighborhoods. This project is funded through our Federal Congestion and Mitigation Air Quality, otherwise known as CMAC. It is a $650 million, I'm sorry, $650,000 project, with $115,000 of that being used for the preliminary engineering, approximately $35,000 being utilized to obtain these easements that we need, and about $500,000 to do the construction. Project schedule, again, we have been underway since September of 2020. We are now ready to move into the right-of-way acquisition phase pending your approval. And should that occur, that would begin in January of this, in about 45 days. We're anticipating somewhere around October, so this come and fall, we would have the opportunity to be ready to advertise the project, award the project again early 2023, and hopefully be under construction and finished by the following October of 2023. And with that, after the public hearing, I stand by to answer any questions you may have on this project and this process.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any speakers to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
Uh, move for approval, Mayor.
Most for approval. Councilman Williams?
Second.
We have a second for Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir. I would just like to make a quick comment that this is a great opportunity to widen that roadway pathway. We need to get it down to the Seaboard. It's a good start in that direction. We had a lot of comments that people are really looking forward to seeing this happen. So I want to thank you all for trying to move this forward. I lend my support to it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow,
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett,
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg,
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson,
Yes.
Councilmember Ward,
Yes.
Councilmember Williams,
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett,
Yes.
Mayor Dooman,
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for property located at 117, 118, and 119 C Street, zoning map 36A, parcels 188, 189, asterisk 190, 202A asterisk 1, and 202B asterisk 1. Account numbers 301309000, 302017000, 300611100, and 30061050. It's RZN 2020 dash two conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Bob Goomis, Interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Presented for your consideration is a request to amend previously accepted proffers associated with the development along C Street. Following that, in June of two thousand and nineteen, the developer was provided, released from the need to advance capacity at both the middle and high school levels due to a reduction in the student enrollment at that time. Finally, in March of two thousand and twenty-one, the developer acquired additional property, and these lands were rezoned from B-two to RU also, specifically for the use as a stormwater management facility to accommodate the development. The developer has now asked for, realized that there's an opportunity for greater development potential within the layout of the project, and as such desires to utilize this opportunity by increasing the total number of units from the eighty-five to one-hundred-and-two units. Staff has evaluated the request and has concluded that based on the previous approvals and proffers associated with all those previous rezonings, that the, there's adequacy at both the traffic and utilities are being met, and that the additional seventeen units being requested will not generate the need for additional traffic or utility improvements. However, in regards to school, analysis does show that there is currently a deficit at the high school level, and accordingly, the applicant has proffered to advance the capacity for the two additional high school students that would be generated by this project, at a cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars per student. This contribution, as proposed, would be provided at the beginning of the eighty-six unit. Finally, the planning commission, at its meeting of October nineteenth, by a vote of seven to zero, has recommended approval of this request. Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, after which I and other staff members would be available.
Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Greer Ferguson. I represent the applicant in this case. My address is three-thirty-two West Constance Road, here in the city of Suffolk. I want to thank Mr. Goomis for giving a brief report, and I will also try to be brief, but I think staff prepared a very good report, and what we are attempting to do with this property as a part of the Moore's Point project off of C Street, is simply to maximize the efficiency and the use of the land, and really to make for a better neighborhood. So when my clients came in originally, they didn't, they didn't have the land they have now, and over the course of several years, we've added land, we've re-engineered the property, and we've come up with the plan which has been proposed to you today. We feel that we've, we've fallen under the comprehensive plan for thirty-five. This falls right into it. We're consistent with the use of the property, with the adjoining properties all around us. It's very consistent. Obviously, that area has become a very popular area. It has access right there to fifty-eight, and so houses in that area are in need, and they're being sold, because it's a good place to build houses. I would, we've all previously proffered that we will be putting in a right-hand turn lane. That will, that is unchanged. The plan which we have presented was also proffered, that we will compensate for any increase in students, to put, putting burden on the high schools or the, or the elementary schools. That has been proffered. We feel that this is a good plan. We would, in light of the staff's recommendation and unanimous planning commission recommendation, I would just prefer to rest and answer any questions after you all have your discussion or after anyone in opposition comes. So I would respectfully ask that you pass this application as presented, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? If not, do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Corey Anup. I live on Prospect Road, which is going to be line item number fifteen. But the reason why I'm bringing this up, and I'm coming to say something now, is because I think the two are connected, the one on C Street and the one on Prospect Road, due to the infrastructure and the pa- and the paperwork. And yes, according to this, and the city planning, they're saying that there's enough transportation area or road to go through. But after reading to you, you guys' twenty-thirty-five plan for the city of Suffolk, it's saying C Street and Portsmouth Boulevard, as well as Portsmouth Boulevard and East Washington Street, are actually a main concern for traffic and congestion at this point in time. So this is going to be the overall of me coming in with Prospect and talking about C Street at the same time, but I wanted to get on record that it's actually connected. It's, and we not, need not to look at everything as an individual point of approving or disapproving. We have to look at the overall structure of everything. And by using fifty-eight and only having that bypass at the moment, and having no other where to go to by adding vehicles, and if I use Mr. Arnett, who is proffering both properties at this point in time, by using one of his paperwork that he gave me, just on Prospect Road, by adding the fifteen houses he wants to, says a hundred and eighty-two times those vehicles have the opportunity to come out. So if you do the math, I'm not going to bore you guys with it, but that gives about twelve-point-three. Well, if he takes eighty-five houses and makes it a hundred and two houses, that takes that, another twelve-hundred-and-fifty-four vehicles coming in and out of the road on C Street and fifty-eight bypass Portsmouth Boulevard at that point in time, and right there by Nansman Parkway, East Washington, and Portsmouth Boulevard, the bypass right there, and just makes a lot more traffic. And the twenty-thirty-five report that you guys have put out for the city of Suffolk is saying that's a potential watch, but there's no plans to fix it until then. Thank you, I appreciate your time on this one.
Thank you. We have a next speaker to speak in opposition.
The gentleman before me, city council, pretty much stole all my thunder. I live right, right behind it of...
Excuse me, sir, can we have your name and address, please?
Yes, right now.
Thank you.
Okay, just maybe pull your speaker up a little bit. A little taller than the last guy, there you go.
Bart R. Stevens, at four-twenty-eight Water Wheel Crescent, and it's right behind where he wants to build his condos. And I, I agree with him, the fifty-eight business is, I've been living there now since two thousand and two, and recently with all the, like he was saying, it's a very popular area, and they've been building, uh, Moore Point, you know, right in that area, and also, Patriot Wake was also a big neighborhood built in that, and it's all causing a lot of congestion pretty much every night on fifty-eight business. And also, C Street now, since they built the sewers and what have you, all the groundwork for these condos they want to build, now we have flooding on C Street, which I don't understand, because they built a big reserve pond to catch all the water. But now it's flooding, and it's, it's not going to be wide enough, like he was saying. If we go from eighty-two to a hundred and something units, it's, I can't see how it's going to handle all that traffic. And I would think we would need to address the fifty-eight business problem and the flooding on C Street before we allow it to be enlarged to a hundred-plus units. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Do we have any other speakers to speak in opposition?
Hearing none, Mr. Ferguson, would you like your rebuttal time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think the concerns that we have heard are concerns we often hear by existing residents to any kind of growth coming to their place. Often, these residents actually were maybe the first ones to get into an area which is developed, and then as more development comes, which is natural, they see it as too congested or too much traffic is coming. As you will see in your reports, the traffic engineers do not have a problem with the additional units that we will be adding. While the zoning that we have requested would allow us to go up to a hundred and two units, our plan right now is only to have ninety-six units, so we're really only adding eleven units to fit the new plan in, which we feel is a better plan than the original eighty-five plan, will actually make for a better neighborhood. I understand their concerns, growth is coming, we are in the urban growth corridor. This is a long-term planning issue that, that council has approved and that the planners are consistent with, and I'm sure it won't be long before something will be done with fifty-eight business coming into town there. That is, it's almost unheard of that roads come first and then the neighborhoods. That, that would be a great thought, but you and I all know that's not the way it works. The neighborhoods come, and then the roads get widened, and we see that all over the city. We've seen it at the North End, and the roads gradually have gotten better, and the people who live there are very happy, and I think the residents in this area will remain happy. Keep in mind that we are adding a right-hand turn lane off of Portsmouth Boulevard into the neighborhood, which was a part of our previous proffer, so we're trying to do our part to make this a safe and, and a good project for everyone. So we would ask, despite the, the concerns, that this project be approved. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Motion being ordered, Councilman Fawcett.
I do have one question. Maybe traffic engineer could answer this, or Public Works Director. Just a quick question, don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but...
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea of what the crash rate is at that location?
Off the top of my head, I do not, sir.
Okay, so we don't have...
I do know my staff has evaluated, did not find an area of concern, but I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson?
I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I wanted to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Can we get a motion approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Johnson?
Robert, please, I'm sorry. I have a concern, just a question. The flooding of C Street, are we aware of that as a city?
I'm not, as far as I've heard of that. I can postulate that possibly the issue is some of the erosion sediment containment control measures in place to keep dirt out of the existing drainage could be holding back water, but we can certainly, we'll, I'll have staff review that and make sure that the systems are working correctly.
And thank you. Mr. Goomis, as far as the project going forward, there'll be, Mr. Goomis, I'm sorry. Part of the project will actually be making sure that there are holding ponds to hold any water or any, any runoff from this...
Oh, absolutely.
Because this has been known as a wet area in, in years past. I know it's better now, but...
Correct. As a part of, you know, the rezoning, of course, is just the first step, then there's the engineering. So during the rezoning phase of all these rezonings, we evaluated both traffic as well as reaching a level of comfort, that drainage issues can be successfully addressed.
But I think, I think that's a concern.
And then subsequent with the design, they'll need to address those.
I just wanted to raise the issue, though, because I do think that's a concern in this community. So as long as we as a city are going to make sure that's properly handled, I'll second the motions.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Well, Councilman Johnson was asking the same question that I was going to ask, but I'm very familiar with the area and that street, and I've never known it to flood before. So with the new BMP put there, that's where the water is supposed to be going to, I'm sure. So is that going to take care of the flooding that the gentleman came up and talked about C Street being flooded, start flooding after development has started? Who want to answer that? I don't know who might want to answer that.
Yes, sir. As Mr. Goomis said, this is a rezoning application, so as such, we, we take some preliminary looks at things, and as he stated, we kind of do a preliminary look at drainage in those areas to make sure we feel we have a comfort level that they can address that. But once this moves to the next step, which is the hard engineering, there are state, city, and federal requirements that must be met, so even if you approve it tonight, if we get down in there and they can't make it work from an engineering perspective, they can't address it and, and check all the boxes, then he still cannot go forward. So yes, sir, the, the systems will be designed to handle anything that's generated from this project, and again, we check it all off, we inspect it as it's being constructed and certify that it is correct. And then going forward, on an annual basis, I have staff members through the stormwater program that go back and re-inspect these facilities to make sure they continue to operate properly.
Thank you, sir. That was my big concern as well.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, and a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from M-two, Heavy Industrial Zoning District, to B-two, General Commercial Zoning District, for property located at fifty, forty-five Nansman Parkway, zoning map twenty, parcel twenty-two J, account number three-zero-six-zero-zero-three-nine-five-three. This is RZN two thousand and twenty-one, twelve conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Mr. Goomis will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presented for your consideration is a request to rezone approximately four-point-three acres from M-two, Heavy Industrial, to B-two, General Commercial. The subject property is located in the Northgate Commerce Park, which is located in the northern growth area, suburban use district. The property fronts along Nansman Parkway and is adjacent to lands located at the corner of Nansman Parkway and Northgate Commerce Parkway, that you may recall the city council recently rezoned from M-two to B-two to allow for the development of a drive-through restaurant and convenience store with gasoline sales. The proposed use is for a single-user retail store, and access will be provided by way of an internal road network within the Commerce Park, and also through a shared entrance from Nansman Parkway, which will be shared by the adjacent B-two development that I just noted being the fast-food restaurant and convenience store. In an attempt to be sensitive to the potential for users within the Commerce Park and on this piece of property, the applicant has proffered to... Nansman Parkway, zoning map twenty parcel twenty-two J, account number three zero six zero zero three nine five three. This is RZN twenty twenty-one twelve conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Mr. Gumas will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presented for your consideration is a request to rezone approximately four point three acres from M2 Heavy Industrial to B2 General Commercial. The subject property is located in the North Gate Commerce Park, which is located in the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. The property fronts along Nansman Parkway and is adjacent to lands located at the corner of Nansman Parkway and North Gate Commerce Parkway, that you may recall the city council recently rezoned from M2 to B2 to allow for the development of a drive-through restaurant and convenience store with gasoline sales. The proposed use is for a single-user retail store, and access will be provided by way of an internal road network within the Commerce Park, and also through a shared entrance from Nansman Parkway, which will be shared by the adjacent B2 development that I just noted being the fast food restaurant and convenience store. In an attempt to be sensitive to the potential for users within the Commerce Park and on this piece of property, the applicant has proffered to restrict the potential uses that may be objectionable along this corridor, and to permit only retail sales and services on the property requested to be rezoned to B2. As presented, the proposed use will turn its back to Nansman Parkway and will face the internal street within Commerce, within the Commerce Park. I will note that Nansman Parkway is a special corridor overlay district, which requires more stringent setbacks, architectural standards, and landscaping standards. And as discussed with the applicant, we envision that there likely may be a need to establish landscaping burns, for example, to provide additional buffering and visual buffering from the impacts that the outside activities at the rear of the store may generate from view from Nansman Parkway. The Planning Commission, by a vote of seven of zero, has forwarded this request for your consideration with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Mayor, this does conclude my presentation, and after which, public hearing will be available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, with the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Brian Lane. I'm here on behalf of the developers tonight as an agent, speaking for the project. My address is seven zero two one Auburn View Boulevard in Suffolk, and that was a sound report, I cannot add a whole lot to that. I would like to thank Bob and his team working with us, we didn't get to this task tonight easily, I would say, there were a lot of misogyny that they asked us to do, and we feel like we did it. I would like to say that Tractor Supply has enjoyed its business relationship over on Prudin Boulevard with the city, and as such, they're looking forward to a positive vote tonight to expand their business over on this side of Suffolk. We did meet with the property owner, well, we did not meet, I take that back, Greg Berg sent out a package for us to the Property Owners Association, we did not have any concerns or basically any response at all back that we had to address with them. We feel like that we've checked that box, and Planning Commission voted unanimously to move the project forward. We have staff report, we're consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we look forward to a favorable vote tonight, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition? Are there any speakers to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great addition to the North Gate area. I mean, I'm just glad that we're getting Tractor Supply close to where we live at, so we can share that, not having to go all the way to Prudin. I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve it as it's been presented.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
I'll second the motion.
We get a second for Vice Mayor Bennett, any further discussion of the motion? I, too, am very much in favor of this ordinance, I think it's, will complement the property that we've rezoned on the corner for the convenience store and drive-through and bring more retail to an industrial park, so I, too, am very much in favor of. And if there's no more discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District for property located on Prospect Road, zoning map thirty-five, parcel ninety-two, account number three zero zero nine five one zero zero zero. This is RZN twenty twenty-one thirteen conditional. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gumas. Missed it on my script here. Mr. Manager?
Bob's going to do the report.
I apologize, jumped up here too quick.
They wanted to get out early, I'm just trying to do my part.
Well, thank you. Again, presented for your consideration is a request to rezone three point two three acres from RLM Residential Low Medium Density to RU Residential Urban. The subject property is located within the Central Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use The property is located on the west side of Prospect Road, just off of Portsmouth Boulevard, and its surrounding compatible zoning districts include B2 General Commercial, RLM Residential Low Medium Density, RU Residential Urban, and RC Residential Compact. Surrounding uses include single-family homes, the Magnolia Gardens multifamily apartments, and the East End Baptist Church. As proposed, the developer intends to establish a fifteen-lot, single-family detached unit subdivision. It will be accessed by a single cul-de-sac street, and given the location off of the specific property and the surrounding zoning uses, staff believes that the proposed use and density is in compliance with the 2035 comprehensive plan. As proffered, the applicant has voluntarily offered to limit the use to no more than fifteen homes. He is also obligated himself to construct a right-turn lane off of Portsmouth Boulevard onto Prospect Road, and furthermore, the developer has proffered to make improvements to the existing median break on Portsmouth Boulevard in order to better accommodate left-turn lanes from Prospect Road onto Portsmouth Boulevard heading east. Finally, also, based on the adequacy of existing public facilities, as proffered, in order to advance capacity at the high school level, the developer has offered to provide additional cash contribution in order to advance capacity to be made. This will be made through a cash contribution totaling twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, and will be distributed evenly over the entire development at a value of one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents per unit. Finally, while the developer is responsible for making improvements along his frontage of Prospect Road, in response to citizen comments that were provided at the Planning Commission public hearing held back in October, the developer subsequently has provided additional proffers to widen Prospect Road to a pavement width of twenty feet. This would be occurred for that section of Prospect Road located between this particular property, the proposed project site, and the intersection of Prospect Road at Portsmouth Boulevard. In considering this request, the Planning Commission, by a vote of four to three, has recommended approval. Again, they were not privy to that last proffer that I just mentioned. This concludes my staff report and following public hearing. Mr. Mayor, I and other staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, with the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address, to speak in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Greer Ferguson, my address is three three two West Constance Road here in the city of Suffolk, and I represent the applicant in this matter before you tonight. As Mr. Gumas explained to you, we are taking a piece of property, which is a little over three acres on Prospect Road, and Prospect Road is an older street, if you drive down it, it's been there a while, there's one new house on it, which one of the speakers tonight has a nice home on, very, almost across the street from where we would be, our three acres. There are only six other houses on Prospect Street, although going all the way back past Magnolia Gardens. Then there are the two houses that are on each side of the Boulevard, the intersection between Portsmouth Boulevard and Prospect, making a total of about eight houses, which in one way or the other, you could argue this project would affect. What we would like to do, as a matter of right, we could build nine new homes on the property today with present zoning. However, what we would like to do, and we could make about a project, we would like to add six, which would put us at fifteen. The zoning which we are requesting would allow more than that, but all we want, and we have proffered, that we would only add six over what we can do now, so we're talking about six additional houses to what we could already do. We've made the usual proffers to compensate for any school changes, all that is before you, all the utilities are adequate, everything seems to fit right into the button of what the city is looking for in this inner growth corridor, which is asking for denser growth to encourage growth in these areas rather than people trying to get dense out in the country. We are trying to grow around the city, around the core city, and then over time, maybe with planning, move out more into the country. So this is a part of the, inner part of the city, it's the way our planners have looked at it. What we have attempted to do is, the only issue we see with our project of any nature is this of concern about traffic along Prospect Street, where like, like I just said, there's six houses today, one on each corner, a total of eight houses, then you've got Magnolia Gardens, which has a lot of elderly people living back there, I'm sure each of you are familiar with Magnolia Gardens. We've received no pushback from Magnolia Gardens, no objections, we've received no objections from East End Baptist Church, which is one of our neighbors, we don't, we don't have road connection to them, but they will be one of our backyard neighbors once the project is completed. What we have proposed to do, and a part of our proffer to basically make Prospect Street a better street, we're going to widen Prospect Street to twenty feet from the intersection all the way back to our project. We will put in a right-hand turn lane, we've proffered that off of Portsmouth Boulevard onto Prospect Street, which does not exist today, and we, so we've done the widening, and we've also, to ease making a left-hand turn off of Prospect Street, we have proffered that we will modify the median, which affects a left-hand turn lane, which separates Portsmouth Boulevard, so that it will be easier to make a left-hand turn out of Prospect Street onto Portsmouth Boulevard. That's three major road improvements which we have proffered, with us asking for just six additional houses that we'd have a right to build. With that being said, and with Mr. Gumas having given his report, with staff report, and with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and also factoring in our additional proffer of widening the street, I'm going to leave it at this point, and I will save my time for, to respond to any opposition. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anybody else to speak in favor? At this time, do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
Thank you again, my name is Corey Onop, I live at two hundred Prospect Road. I'm going to be fast, because I have about nineteen people behind me, so I doubt we're going to make fifteen minutes. Once again, my problem is with the ingress and egress, I've gone through the VDOT paperwork, and most of it has to do with commercial driving. The problem is, our road on Prospect Road is only a thousand seventy-five feet long. What they're trying to take by developing, putting fifteen houses in there instead of nine, is somewhere between the first three hundred and three hundred and fifty feet. According to Mr. Arnett's paperwork here, with the fifteen houses having two a day, that's about a hundred and eighty-two cars coming in and out on Prospect Road in that first three hundred feet every single day. On, I'm sorry, page, I guess it is nine here, it even says, "All surrounding properties have been developed, thus limiting the property's ability to accommodate the need for infrastructure and improvements." So he's only making the improvements upon the fifteen houses, not the nine. So when Mr. Wilson was asked, sorry, Mr. Arnett was asked by Ms. Wilson last time, is he going to make the improvements if he doesn't get the fifteen, only gets the nine? Three times answered, he said, "I don't have to do anything if I'm only getting the nine." So it's not about the safety and the concern of the citizens there trying to build it, it's just about building the houses to get the more money. Going back to C Street, which we went, I went, came and talked about a little bit ago, I work the roads, I work the interstates every day as a trooper out here, and there's too much congestion as is already, and I understand infrastructure is going to come over time. According to the city council's planning for the 2035 planning mission that you guys have there, everything that's going to be built up or structured is from Willroy and Nansman north or east of where we're at. There's nothing on the road for the fifty-eight bypass Portsmouth Boulevard. It even specifically says in there, "Principal values issued with transportation, Nansman Parkway, Holland and Fifty-Eight Bypass, Portsmouth and East Washington intersection," and it says also as well Portsmouth Boulevard and C Street. So in your guys' own planning, you admitted, or not, sorry, you personally admitted, but the planning admits that C Street and Portsmouth Boulevard, Nansman, East Washington, and Portsmouth Boulevard is an issue. When the gentleman had the map up here showing the RU's, the RC's, all that stuff, they're trying to build more houses, the eighty-five to a hundred and two that you just approved to C Street that possibly make. They're trying to build apartment complexes right behind Lester's Automotive. They also made it residential compact behind the Baptist Church now to build more housing to put on there. That's why I'm saying you can't just look at each project individually, you have to start looking at a whole. There's no plans to build up Portsmouth Boulevard or that road at this point in time, and you keep adding and adding and adding to it. My problem is with, and I can give you specific dates, October eighth, October seventeenth, and specifically recently more, November sixth. We had a fatality, plus another fatality, plus a shooting on Fifty-Eight East End westbound plus south six six four. It shut down the whole area for seven hours at a minimum. How are we supposed to get home? Because according to the 2035 thing, Nansman Parkway going all the way up towards the Lowes and Portsmouth Boulevard area has its own issues, and that's kind of our only way, except for going all the way up through Carrollton and coming down thirty-two and ten. So God forbid if a plane or something goes down, or there's a sinkhole on Fifty-Eight, we keep building in that area, but there's no way for us to get home. That includes a lot of the traffic coming from ninety-five, all the commercial traffic you have coming in and out, it's going to be major issues. Northern Suffolk is getting built up, that's great, you have the one sixty-four bypass to get in there, you have six sixty-four to take in, crossover two sixty-four, there's a whole bunch of different avenues, come through the different tunnels, we don't have that on the south side. I am a newer member, the people that have lived on the streets, some of them have been there since fifty-five, sixty-four, sixty-seven, so it's an older group that's in there. I like the way the road is, I came up to Suffolk, I left Virginia Beach because I wanted to have a little bit more peace, not get all congested again. Sorry, I'm trying to get in as much as I can, because time is short. Road behinds fire. My next thing with growing all of this stuff and looking at the plan that Suffolk has, and I looked, and I have some of the statistics that you guys have available on the website, fire and EMS calls have gone up, police calls have gone up. We keep putting more residential homes in here, but there's nothing to add fire departments that I can find, nothing to add more police officers. Technically, we're supposed to have two hundred in the city of Suffolk, we currently only have about a hundred and eighty, according to the information I could find. So we're going to build more houses, bring more people, it brings more calls, but yet, according to your plan for executing for maintenance and services and facilities, it doesn't have the more updated fire department, the closest one we have is West Washington to come to our place. If we keep putting more houses in there and there's more issues, that one fire department can't keep up, and neither can the police, because they have an issue already. I can tell you, Saturday, there was a shooting, there was one police officer covering almost the whole south side of Suffolk by herself, and we were helping out, crashes in the city of Suffolk on Fifty-Eight Bypass Portsmouth Boulevard, right in front of the Wayshroy. of Suffolk, on Fifty-Eight Bypass, Portsmouth Boulevard, right in front of the Wayshroy, because they had no other Suffolk officers available. Thank you for my time. I appreciate it.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name's Michelle World. I live actually on Portman Boulevard. Well, actually, we have talked about the traffic, already, about traffic's going to be a problem. But I have a problem with my backyard. It floods real bad right now. So, if you build houses behind my house, I'm worried about having more flooding. It's a low land facility as it is. So, if you build fourteen houses behind my house, I don't know how my land going to look, once them houses get back there. I don't know if it's going to have more water problems in my yard, in my sister-in-law yard. I mean, all, four houses right there floods as it is. So, that's my concern, along with the traffic. I have a hard time getting out my yard now, on Portman Boulevard, because of Fifty-eight. So, if you build more houses behind my house, then you, then I have to wait for the traffic to get out of Prospect Lane, to get on Fifty-eight, so that I know I'm going to have more problems with traffic. And that's my main concern. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Council. I'm Dr. Reverend George Smith. I stay on Two Twenty-three Prospect Road. I'm the last house on that street. And there is a problem on that street, because I listened to the developer. What he going to do, he only concerned about the part that he building, but what about the rest of us that live farther down? Because of the fact that there's a problem, because I've been there when the wrestling squad and the fire and at the same time come. And when they are parked in the road, there's no way for me or anybody else to get out of there. The road need wide. Now, I don't have no problem about them making the neighborhood look better, but the problem is, is that, what about the rest of us that we can get in and out? Because there's no way in and out. I lived on that street for thirty years, and there were times that I had to go through the back pass, which you can't go anymore, because they done put a trail there, and the city done put their gate there. So, the only way I can get out to get to the store, I had to go through the woods. And you can't drive a car through the woods there, and I don't like to go through the woods, to tell you the honest truth, but if I have to, then I have to. But please, please, listen to, listen to people that still on the street. There ain't but a few of us. We count two. And if the developers comes in and say that, "We're going to fix the road," when? They say, "Well, sometime. Well, thirty years. I've been there. The road cracked up still. Ain't nothing, ain't done nothing yet." Now, I'm thinking, "Be another thirty years. I'll probably be about ninety years old then." And probably then, the road still won't be fixed. So, I'm asking you to look, look at this real good, and give us some space where we can go in and out as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Deborah Francine Hicks World, and I live on Portman Boulevard. And I stay next door to my Mrs. World. And we have to, I'm having the same problem on that highway. I can't, right now, they fixing the roadways that have sidewalk. As of right now, I cannot even get in my yard. I got so upset, that I took the burr and throw the red in the ditch, because I couldn't get in my driveway. And like she said, in the back of my yard, when it rains, it's just like a flood. And if you go down on Prospect Road, they did pave, they have paved the road, because where they paved it, it's already cracking again. That's all I have to say about this matter. But if you're going to do anything, do it right. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in opposition.
I'm sorry, I was trying to give the other people to speak. Again, my name is Coryonop. I'm here proffering for Ms. Willie May, Mayfield, that lives right in front of me, at Two-O-Two Prospect Road. This is the letter that she wrote. If I may read it real quick.
Sir, I'm sorry, but we can't let you speak in. Can you read the letter?
I can't read the letter on behalf of somebody?
Just checking. City attorney, I'm getting to know. Just, just the process, sorry. Do we have any else to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening to everyone, Mayor and Vice Mayor, everyone. My name is Sandra Wickens, and I live at eleven-fourteen Portman Boulevard, on the corner of Portman Boulevard and Prospect Road. I've been there, basically, all my life, and I can say that it's very hectic. The traffic coming through there, the accidents, is, you know, I see plenty of accidents right in front of my house. A pile of cars running into each other. Five cars. They done had accident, it all of them ran into each other. And this is something that I have seen often, since I've been living on Portman Boulevard. And it's quiet, and it's nice, and it's a very good area to live in, and I can see why they want to be out there. But you still have to consider the traffic that's out there, the ambulance and stuff that I see coming through there, the police and everything. And it's really bad. The traffic is really bad. So, we do need some work done out there on the roads and everything. So, when it's going to get done, like you said, I don't know, because I haven't seen it done, since I've been living out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker to speak in opposition.
I'm sorry, Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Deborah Francine Hicks World, and I forgot to acknowledge that I have lived on Portsmouth Boulevard ever since nineteen sixty-eight.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please to speak in opposition.
How you doing? My name is Tyrone Crowley. Me and my wife just moved here about a year ago, from York County, and we brought it home right off of Portsmouth Boulevard. Something I noticed, it is a lot of flooding. We live at Ten Eighty Portsmouth Boulevard. But in the back, there's like a ditch. I'm not sure if that's a part of the swamp or whatever. But I know East End Baptist Church has a nice pond out there, and I think that compensates for them not flooding so much. And then that vegetation is also out there. But my concern is, what are they going to do to compensate for that water coming in there? Have they got somewhere they can put it? Or I heard retention pond, or something like that's going to be built out in that area? Just wanted to bring that up, mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker to speak in opposition. We have about two minutes left allocated to opposition. Hearing none, Mr. Ferguson, would you like your five-minute rebuttal time?
Yes, I was Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity for a short rebuttal. It seems that the majority of the, obviously, of the concerns involve two things, traffic and flooding. Let's address the flooding, which has not been discussed. The, this is a relatively low side of town, and those houses that are flooding have been there for a long, long time. And there was, back in those days, there was no plans to do anything. Today, while you might, whatever you approve today, as was previously advised to you by the engineers, we've got to engineer our property, so that we don't create any additional water issues. We will have a BMP. Our property will not add in any way to any flooding in any one yard. It may even actually help, just like East End Baptist has assisted. The newer structures, the newer developments, put in proper infrastructure to absolutely avoid the very things which are being spoken about today, in regards to flooding. And so, in no way do I believe that, I believe that you should be concerned about our project adding any water problems to that area of town. We, I think, will actually help it with the engineering which will be required, as a part of our project, in order to have our site plan approved when that time may come. In regards to the roadway itself, there's been concerns about traffic. And let's be honest with ourselves, if I'd lived on Portman Boulevard in nineteen fifty-five, and then I'm living there today, you're darn right, the traffic's going to seem heavy. It's growth. The city's growing. It's the same stairway on Mr. Johnson's side of town, coming in Fifty-eight. It's growth. And when you have growth, you're going to have more traffic. I've had clients, there was some of this condemnation stuff that's going on, and they've lived in, one lady lived in her house since she was a baby. She's a hundred years old. And she, and it's traffic, but it's a part of the natural growth of a city. And that's what we're experiencing as a city. And that's why we have our long-term planning. That is why we have our comprehensive plans. And some of these objections are actually objections to our long-term planning. And what we are attempting to do is create density around the core city, and gradually, over an extended period of time, grow out. I think that what we have offered to you is a good plan. We have more than compensated. We are giving these residents safety. We're giving them a turn lane off of Portsmouth Boulevard that does not exist. We're widening their street for them, and we're making a left-hand turn onto Portsmouth Boulevard easier, by modifying the median that exists on Portsmouth Boulevard. I would respectfully ask that you approve this project. I think we've made proffers that are good for the neighbors, are good for the neighborhood. I think it was mentioned that we're only doing it to get it approval. The truth of the matter is, most people make proffers to help get something passed. I mean, how many times have you ever gone to a negotiating table and just said, "Hey, by the way, here's a hundred dollars, because I woke up in a good mood today?" No, you're doing it because you have something you want, but you're giving something up in return. That's a natural part of negotiating. It's a natural part of any kind of project, whether it's your personal projects, or a project such as this. And we are willing to make these sacrifices, to get these six additional homes, which we think will make our, not only our project better, but, or make the neighborhood a nicer neighborhood, rather than just somebody sticking nine houses in there. I think that our plan will make this a better neighborhood, and I respectfully ask that you approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We've got about a minute and a half of rebuttal time. Would anyone else like to speak in rebuttal? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've heard, heard everything tonight, and I've looked at the project. I've been out there, taken a good, hard look. Nine homes can be built right now for, just be built. And there are no proffers to it. They can be built, and what have you. It seems to me that the project would improve the area by putting in the BMP that's there. That's going to take the drainage, and maybe that will help everyone else there, some of that drainage on that end. It also is adding to the street, as they've said. It just seems to me, and especially going out on Portsmouth Boulevard, it just seems to me it's a good project. And with that, I feel like it would really be a help. And I think in the long run, the community really will benefit from it, because they're going to fix the road to some degree. I've been there. It's very hard, and I think it can work. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes, I'd just like to ask a lawyer, Ferguson, one question, if you don't mind.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Just to ask you, with the amount of people that came up, did anybody talk to with the community?
We, we, Mr. Arnett made those attempts to speak to as many people as possible, and we would be, we were glad to meet with anyone. We did, he attempted to contact someone by phone. He could answer that question better than I could. He, that's a matter he handled personally. And he did speak with some of them. He didn't know all of these people would be here. We certainly weren't expecting folks from all over Portman Boulevard, even though we do respect the opinions of the two people who live on the corner, as our neighbors, even though they have Portsmouth Boulevard addresses. But insofar as the number we contacted, we had spoken with several of the speakers tonight on numerous occasions, especially, we, Mr. Arnett has spoken two or three times with the trooper, who would be right across the street from our project. Just so there's no misunderstanding, our project is not going to face all over Prospect Street. We'll have a turn in, and our project will go down into a cul-de-sac. So, we won't be creating any parking problems on Prospect Street. Our, our neighborhood will be self-contained. Any parking problems which exist on Prospect Street are there today, and we will not be adding to any of those issues. That's, that's already there.
Okay, I thought, I think I heard them say, had a concern, how long or when it would happen. Do you have a time period on that?
A time period on the development taking place?
The street or whatever.
Well, the way the proffer would work is, we would have to do that improvement before we could get a permit on the first house.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Posit.
Yes, Mr. Lewis, I've got a little question for you. I've heard a couple of things tonight with regards to improvements to the roadway, both on Prospect, as well as Portsmouth Boulevard. Talk to me a little bit about that median. What, what is that going to, or not going to do for this project?
It should enhance the safety. One of the things staff identified early on is the alignment. That median doesn't quite line up as well as it should. And this project is actually going to move the nose back, and widen this up, and again, make it a little easier to make that left-hand turn out of there. In addition, they're adding the right-turn lane. So, today, you have to slow in a through lane to make a right in. This will allow a safety lane, a turn lane, that traffic can get into and turn in.
What about a left-out? What are they going to do?
The left-out is just like any other left-out. They'll come up there, this, when traffic clears, they'll make the left-out. Certainly, the median is not wide enough to shelter in. So, like many places in our city, you'll have to make sure you clear both left and right when you make that movement.
How, how much of the roadway is going to be, is going to be overlaid or paved, and the length is it?
Again, it would be, it'd be my position that they would go from Portsmouth Boulevard all the way back through the limits of their project. So, not just to the intersection, but the frontage that they have that remains on Prospect Road. After that, public works certainly will take a look at the, at the road in there, see what the PCI index is on it, when it should be paved again. And there may be an opportunity that we can partner with this developer. And again, when he finishes his piece, we continue the rest of the street. But again, I need to research and see exactly where this particular street is, and the inventory of when it should be paved again.
Okay. All right. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Mr. Gumas, I'm picking on you tonight. I need to be educated a little bit, Mr. Gumas. If we, if we take this and take it from RLM to RU, it allows more houses, obviously. Is there much RU over in that area? In your opinion? Is there much RU in the area that we're?
There's a considerable amount, I believe. Here's an exhibit that shows the existing zoning. We have RU immediately behind the property. Then adjacent, we also have the RC in the B1.
So, if we didn't approve it, and you had to go back to the nine houses, do they have to put in water retention ponds with just nine houses? Is it the same type of situation?
The subdivision regulations would still be the same. So, they would have to address all of their stormwater on site.
So, basically, what we're allowing for this is simply to be able to put more houses into a smaller area, correct?
They are, correct. They are increasing the density than what they could do by right, by, I believe, the six additional homes. And with that, they then are proffering those additional improvements that would not be required, or coming, as I understand it, with just the by-right development. So, by right, they would construct their subdivision.
My concern is the smaller houses, and I see it's trending a little bit in our city. That's a huge concern, when they're still going to have to take care of the water runoff problem as is, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And again, this area is within the inner-ring suburban. So, they, you know, according to our comprehensive plan, and again, recognizing where this property actually is within that, density ranges for the inner-ring suburban are generally substantially higher than what is being proposed. But again, the developer being, recognizing the But again, the developer being, recognizing the location of this property on the periphery and so forth, has, uh, proposed a, a much lower density than would generally be expected in the, that, um, growth area.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Sorry, I don't, mine doesn't light up, so I still have to...
Yeah, you're lit, you're lit. I mean, you're not lit, your light's lit.
Huh? No.
You're lit.
Oh, it is, okay. All right, very good. I can't see it from here. The, um, sorry about that. Um, I just wanna make a statement, um, not necessarily for and against, but we have a lot of examples around the city of Suffolk right now where new construction has unintentionally had negative impacts by way of flooding on older residents. And I just wanna make sure, and I, you know, respect our departments and know that they're gonna do their job to make sure this doesn't happen, but it just seems like we see this over and over again, that we have new construction that is causing problems for residents that have been in their homes for a long time. And I just wanna make a note of that and make sure that we address that and that we don't increase problems with flooding, that we actually help problems with flooding on a project such as this. Thank you.
Councilman Fossett.
Yeah, one last comment. Uh, I think the mitigation of the runoff is, is pretty much what it says during, they'll, they'll, uh, address this during the engineering stage. This is really just the very first process in this. Uh, I would like to second Mr. Goldberg's, though.
We've got a motion, Councilman Goldberg, and a second from Councilman Fossett. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Lewis a question on the... I know we haven't done a traffic study as far as Prospect Road, how many cars in and out of there.
Yes, sir, there is a traffic study, I believe, attached to this, uh, application.
Okay. And as far as Port, uh, Prospect Road, is that a standard street width-wide as far as, is it in the VDOT right-of-way, uh, within the guidelines of that? Are we two feet narrow or anything there?
So as has been noted, this is an existing street that's been there for many, many years, when many of the standards were much different than they are today. So if this was a brand-new street being built afresh on brand-new land, it would be much wider than what it is today and even what is being proposed to be widened. The developer is offering to make some improvements to enhance it, but it is not being brought up to the full width. Again, without privilege of having had the opportunity to review this, my guess is existing right-of-way would not support a full-width 30-foot-wide road as what you would find in the new subdivision with that acquisition. And that's probably my guess as to why they're only doing what they're doing. But again, this is an enhancement of what's there today. So does it meet current standards today? It does not. Does it meet the standards from when it was constructed? It probably did, and this is an enhancement.
Okay. But when, if this project is approved, you will look at, uh, resurfacing the whole entire street?
We will evaluate it and see where it does fall in our normal resurfacing program. Yes, sir. Again, we have opportunities to piggyback with a developer and get kinda, kinda like our revenue sharing, where we can get a, spend a dollar and get a dollar. We try to use those opportunities every time we can.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard a couple of things, I, I think I wanna, I, I've gotta, I've gotta sort of challenge it. First of all, uh, the BMP, uh, does work. It has been designed that way for years to work, uh, to take that, that subdivision that they're building and they have to engineer that so the water that, that creates stays there on that site. And eventually, it normally helps if, near other, other areas because that's how it's designed, it's engineered that way. Uh, that can help. Second of all, it's just not the BMP that's being offered here. The right-hand turn coming off of Portman Boulevard is, is immensely important because I've seen on other parts of roads, when you, when you're going off a, a two-lane, a two, two-sided road and you're, you're pulling off to the right, uh, you're stopping traffic and next thing you know, you're hit from behind. This gives you a pull-off now that they, will make safety for that community and I think in the long run it would be advantage for the community. I think it works. And then, of course, the, the left turn out. I think going across that median, that median doesn't line up, it will line up now, and so you'll have that better opportunity of getting out. So there's more to it than just the water, just the BMP. And also fixing the road. That road is narrow, it would not, it would not support a, a regular subdivision road because you'd have to take acquisition, you have to take property from other people to make that all work. But if you can set it up to fix it up a little bit, in which they're offering up to 20 feet, I think it gives it a better opportunity. So with that, again, I want to, uh, make sure that, uh, I'm definitely in favor of this project. Thank you.
Any other discussion of the motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Williams, you do have to raise your hand. Okay, there you go.
Uh, actually, I have a question for Mr. Lewis.
I can't see his...
Thank you for recognizing me. Uh, Mr. Lewis, um, two questions. The first question is, uh, what are the standards, uh, for highways as it relates to a traffic signal?
So our traffic signal construction is actually regulated by the federal government. There's something called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices that stipulate there's 12 different opportunities that you can go in and justify the construction of a traffic signal. Generally, it has to do with traffic volumes. It can also be justified by traffic accidents and certainly pedestrians, um, progression of traffics along a highway, sometimes we can add traffic signals in traffic movements. So there are a number of things. But in this particular case, most likely it would be the traffic volumes. With eight homes and certainly even with 15, that would bring you up to, what is that, 23? That's about 230 trips a day coming out of the side street by standard. Uh, I do not anticipate it would ever come anywhere near meeting the, the warrants to justify a traffic signal, unless at such time the traffic just got so heavy on Portman Boulevard and the accidents jumped way up to justify that.
Okay. Uh, the other question, gentleman stated that he's not in opposition of the project, but his concern is the other end of the road. Okay, um, Mr. Bennett and other council members said something about going in and making improvements to the road as resurfacing, as it relates to resurfacing. But my question is, can the city take a look at it and maybe widen it a little, maybe not up to standards, uh, what it should be now, new subdivision standard? But widen it enough so the people could at least, if there is an accident or if there is, um, emergency vehicles on the street, that they would be able to get around those, um, vehicles?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, our maintenance is funded through the VDOT maintenance system and there's very clear guidelines as to what we can do. We can maintain an existing road, VDOT will not allow us to improve an existing road. Now, certainly there are other opportunities, there are grant programs, we're bringing projects in front of you all the time that we apply for and receive funding. We can look at those processes and see if there's a, as a grant opportunity out there. Certainly we're getting ready to enter into the capital improvement program. At any given time, a project can be generated and put into CIP program and funded it, but it takes that type of funding to actually improve and widening a road versus just maintaining it. So in other words, I can pave it, I can overlay it, but I can't really widen that pavement as I go. I can't close the ditches up with maintenance money.
But that is an option we can explore, correct?
Yes, sir. We could, we will certainly put it on our list and keep our eyes out for any state or federal grant opportunities. And if council wanted to, us to investigate the cost and the logistics of doing some type of capital improvement program in the future, we can investigate that for you also.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Uh, we've got a motion from Councilman Goldberg and a second from Councilman Fossett. And before we vote, um, I'd just like to say, I appreciate all the speakers coming forward, every one of you, and voicing, you know, your opinion and expressing your concerns. Um, I, I fully empathize with what you're saying, but looking at it on the surface, we, what we're doing is considering a rezoning from RLM to RU. So by right, assuming that that project would move forward with nine homes, what we're talking about is increasing it to 15, so that's six new homes. So the issue should be, what is being done to mitigate the impact of those six homes? Because nine are allowed. So with that, there's a pavement width improvement of 20 feet from the site to Portman Boulevard that will be completed prior to their first certificate of occupancy. Keep in mind that all proffers also have to be bonded in the event that the developer goes south or goes to Vegas and loses all his money. We can go to the bond and have those proffers, uh, completed. And the other thing you'd be getting is a right-turn lane on Portman Boulevard. Those are for sure. A right-turn lane and a 20-foot improvement to the pavement. Uh, Mr. Lewis alluded to the fact that maybe when we look into other options, with those improvements being done, it could, not it will, it may open up an opportunity for the city to kinda piggyback on those improvements to extend it some more, if funds are available. So with that being said, um, I also am in favor of the ordinance as presented. And we have a first and a second. And if there's no further discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Ward?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to three with Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Ward, and Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
Okay. We have no ordinances this evening. Uh, we have several resolutions. Our first resolution is to approve the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, Janssen, and their related corporate entities, and directing the city manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the mayor's, uh, pretty, pretty much summed up the resolution, but I will say it does adopt the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, Janssen, and their related corporate entities. Settlement proposals have been negotiated, will cause these corporations to pay up to 26 billion nationwide to resolve opioid-related claims against them. Uh, the red, resolution also provides authorization for the city manager to execute the necessary documents for the city's participation in the settlement.
All right, the resolution has been presented for council's consideration and a motion would be on. Councilman Fossett.
Move to approve.
A motion for approval. Councilman Ward with a second. Do you have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next resolution is a resolution to approve the city of Suffolk's participation in the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding and directing the city manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the MOU. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Short of repeating everything that was just said, um, it does authorize, uh, the city manager to execute the necessary documents for the city's, uh, participation in the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum. And similar to before, I should have turned to the city attorney, making sure I had not missed any key points.
Yes, you got it all.
Okay. Okay, resolution being presented for council's consideration. Councilman Goldberg.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Councilman Fossett.
Second his motion, sir.
A motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg, and a second from Councilman Fossett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have several staff reports this evening. Our first one is the 2022 Legislative Agenda. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Vice, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. With us this evening are the city's Legislative Liaison, Mindy Carlin, uh, who was president and co-founder of Access Point Public Affairs, and also with her is Emily Reynolds of, of the Vice President. Uh, they are the city's, um, legislative liaisons and they'll be providing the draft 2022 Legislative Agenda for you this evening.
Tall up here. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. Um, it's truly a privilege to be up here, um, with you tonight and to be able, um, to meet you all face-to-face. Um, we're gearing up for that 2022 General Assembly Session, um, where we're really looking forward to being able to represent the city of Suffolk. Um, I know we have quite a bit to cover this evening, um, so we'll go through these slides, but first I just wanna take a moment and thank, um, Randa for all of her hard work on this, um, and, and providing these, these priorities, um, getting them together, but also assisting in the transitioning of our team. Um, she's given us all of the information to be up to date and to effectively do our jobs. So, um, thank you so much, Randa, we appreciate you. Um, so now getting into the proposed legislative items, all right, of importance to the city, um, once improved, once approved, we plan to advocate, um, for those. So you'll notice that your Legislative Agenda packets have two categories. Um, they're the General Assembly Focus and then the Legislative Program Items. Um, so moving into the focuses, this is where we define the pri, the city's priorities broadly. Um, they are a number of ongoing priorities in the agenda, starting with the state transportation funding increases and timely disbursements of the funding. Um, another is public education and our continued support of that with a significant focus on the General Assembly participating in funding the true and necessary costs of that construction, as well as the modernization of the school buildings. Another important focus that we propose is the Western Tidewater Regional Jail regarding the federal recovery request for exemption. Um, we'll be covering this in a little bit more detail at the end of this. Um, it also goes along with your packet, that's the last page in there, so we'll be touching on that in just a few moments. Um, the last item on this slide requests the General Assembly to maintain and strengthen the principles of sovereign immunity for local governments and their officials. Two more ongoing focuses are obtaining universal broadband coverage as well as affordable housing. Um, this has really become very important to many localities, as well as organizations and their priorities. Um, the last item on this slide is a new priority where we, um, propose supporting amendments to the Department of Historic Resources Cemetery Preservation. It's the eligibility of funding parameters, um, specifically the unintentional inequities this program lends to historic African-American cemeteries. Um, the city of Newport News and Hampton brought this issue to us and we are looking to partner and move forward, um, in supporting this. Now we can move on, um, to the Legislative Program Items, which you will find, all of these with greater detail, um, in your Legislative Agenda Packet on page four. Again, you'll see many of these that are ongoing priorities from years past, um, like the Commonwealth Railline Safety Relocation, as well as opposing any unfunded or underfunded mandates that would place further strain on the city. Another familiar item is protecting the city's interest in supporting local control of land, local land use decisions and also maintaining that regulatory authority. The next few items on this slide are newer. Um, the first one is the FOIA Expansion Item, Freedom of Information Act Expansion. Um, it's a VML priority where the city supports the expansion of electronic meetings outside of the state of an emergency period. So this would allow those WebEx meetings to take place without having to be in a current state of an emergency period. The next item is a new item, uh, that is an exemption from the DEQ's reformulated gasoline requirements from farming equipment. So this comes at the request of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, um, where we will continue to work with them and you all as well, um, to explore advancement opportunities. The final bullet on this slide, um, comes from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, um, where we want to support legislation, um, that provides localities with greater authority and option in reforestation. localities with greater authority and option in reforestation, preservation, and management. So there is a growing number of supporters on this particular item from other organizations and localities as well. Moving into, let's see here, there we go. Moving on to the transit item, the city has our own transit system where we are supportive of increased funding for our public transit and ensuring equitable distribution of this funding to guarantee repair of equipment and facilities as well as service expansion. We need continued operating and capital funding for public transit. The last item on this slide is a returning item that comes from our Public Works Department, and that's requesting the continuation of monitoring the TMDL, which is the Total Maximum Daily Load process for polychlorinated bifennals, and work closely with state agencies to provide reasonable solutions. So I'm going to pass it along to my colleague, Mindy, where she will finish this out and then we'll be happy to take any questions that you may have. Sure, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So moving on, I'll continue to talk, Mindy Carlin, with Access Point Public Affairs. Moving on, there are a number of additional environmental and utility priorities that are included in this year's program. On this slide, you have the development that we will be supporting, the development of maximum contaminant levels for PFAS by the Department of Health, ensuring that the minimum will be maintained by the, in the Virginia Department of Health requirements will be at least as protective as those with the EPA. We will also are proposing to oppose any legislation that would impose higher waterworks fee increases, and will be pursuing the expansion of local authorities to be able to self-certify our tax-exempt status with capital improvements, which is a priority shared by a number of other localities. So next slide, a number of financial positions that will be very familiar to you. Taxing authorities will want to protect your ability to maintain your existing taxing authority with respect to internet-based businesses and services. We will be working to protect the locality's ability to impartially regulate traditional electronic, internet-based, virtual, and other types of businesses to ensure that there is a level playing field within those markets. And with this, we'll also be urging the ability to do voluntary collection agreements and sharing financial information as applicable. And then the last item on this slide again is another important financial position in protecting the BPO tax, ensuring that that is not eliminated without any suitable replacement to ensure that that revenue loss is not experienced at the local level. Continuing with financial positions, there are a number of VML priorities here as well. The communications, sales, and use tax will be supporting broadening that coverage to include audio and video streaming services like Hulu or Netflix. With respect to historic preservation tax credits, we know that they have been extremely beneficial in the city of Suffolk, and so we'll want to continue to protect and maintain that program at the state level. With respect to stormwater fee exemptions, we will continue to oppose any exemptions that would allow waivers of those fees for any special interest groups, again noting the impact that has on local revenue when additional exemptions are awarded. So, transportation, there are a number of projects that are included among your transportation priorities and recognizing the critical positioning of the city of Suffolk from a transportation standpoint. Included in those projects are Route 17, Godwin Bridge capacity expansion. That is a $75 million project priority. The Godwin Bridge portion of that would allow that two-lane bridge to be expanded to four lanes. King's Highway Bridge replacement, as you're well aware, that bridge was demolished in 2005, but the gap that that places within the system has not been replaced, and it is included in your priorities to identify a strategy to address that gap. With respect to Route 58 improvements, incremental safety improvements and funding for those is among the recommended priorities. Phase two of Shoulders Hill Road improvements, the consistent growth has warranted widening the link, making it an important, it is an important link between Nansaman Parkway and Route 17, and so that's included in the priorities as are Kimberly Bridge improvements as well, often impacted by flooding, creating long detours. And so there are a number of items that would help to, with that choke point, including recommendations to elevate that bridge above the 100-year flood line and do some work with the storm drains. The Seaboard Coastal Trail also included, a $12.5 million project. Three segments of that trail have been completed, there is one remaining, and so that priority, the dollar figure for that is estimated at $10.5 million. And then finally, with respect to transportation, the Bennetts Creek dredging, which is a federal initiative, and the importance of this is preserving the ability to navigate Bennetts Creek. So that is also included in, on the list of transportation priorities. So, before I get to the organizational endorsements, wanted to provide just a little bit more detail on the Western Tidewater Regional Jail initiative that, as Emily noted, details on that are on the final page of the agenda before you. So as you guys are well aware, that the 180-bed addition was constructed in 1995 at no cost to the state. The jail officers that are working in that jail are funded at no cost to the state. However, in 2005, a change was made at the state level that reduced the amount of that federal per diem. For up to 76 inmates, you continue to be able to maintain the $55 per day per federal inmate. That change allowed $20 of that total $55 to go to the state for inmate 77 to 1/30, and then above 1/30, you're able to have the full $55 per day per diem. We'll be seeking the ability to expand that, given the city, that the beds have been constructed with local, without any input or investment by the state, and the cost to operate it are at no expense to the state. So we'll be looking at strategies to be able to help you keep more of that stipend here in the region for Western Tidewater Jail. So finally, last slide, in addition to the priorities that are before you, in the draft packet you have, the city of Suffolk will also adopt as priorities items outlined in the Virginia Municipal League's legislative program, the 2022 Hampton Roads Planning District Commission's 2022 program, as those items will also pertain to the city. So thank you so much for the opportunity to represent your interest in Richmond. Emily and I are really excited to work for you, and we're happy to answer any questions on your proposed agenda.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, council. Questions, comments? Councilman Williams?
Yes, excellent presentation. Thank you, guys. I'm sure you're going to represent us well, thank you so much. I do have one question. Can you tell me what the BPO tax is?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, the BPO tax is the business personal occupancy and license tax, so it is a tax that's based on gross revenue that small businesses pay, and it is among the very few funding sources that localities have.
Councilman Fawcett?
I know that one because we pay it.
Thank you, ladies, for coming. I just had a couple of questions. I'm just kind of curious of your background into the legislative process. And what other localities have you represented in the past? And kind of like, I've been up in those channels a little bit, and I just kind of wonder how you kind of maneuver in there and what kind of relationship you've had with the General Assembly.
Sure. You want me to go first? Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for that question. Yes, actually, I came, and I'll just kind of give you a little bit of background of myself. I just recently left the Hampton Roads Chamber, where I was Executive Director of Governmental Affairs for them, so advocating on behalf of the business community at the General Assembly session. And then also, my past history, I was a legislative aide for a state senator as well. So that's kind of my background on this. This is our first locality client, but I'll let her list the many clients that we do have, but that's kind of a little bit of the background on myself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. We started our, my husband and I started our public affairs consulting business about 18 years ago. We work exclusively in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have represented one locality in the past, the city of Norfolk. We represented the city specifically on casino gaming on the two years when that legislation was put into place. We represent a wide range of clients throughout Virginia, ranging from chambers of commerce, energy clients, infrastructure telecommunications, healthcare. We represent an association of behavioral health providers that provide Medicaid-funded services throughout the state. We've been doing this for a very long time and bring to the city of Suffolk longstanding relationships that we've developed over many years. We've had the opportunity to grow and do work outside of Virginia. We're very particular, as a small firm, to only take on those clients where we know that we can really maximize opportunity for success, and so we are looking forward to putting all of that credibility, relationships, and experience to work for the city of Suffolk.
So this would be your first municipality that you've actually done a legislative agenda with?
Mr. Mayor, as I said, the full legislative agenda, the answer to be the sole representative, yes. However, as I said, we did represent the actual city of Norfolk on the casino gaming specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I think you all do a great job. I just want to ask you two questions about, no, one question about the African-American cemetery. I really like to know as much as I can about that, and that was something that I always, even eight years ago, I had an interest in it, but coincidence that, matter of fact, coming to office next Sunday, there's a lady that, who lived in my borough, and she asked if I knew Councilman Ward, and so happened, I said, yeah, and what's this about? But anyway, she was interested in one of the grave sites that's behind one of the hotels, so it happened to be an African-American gravesite, and I would like to know as much as I can, and please keep me abreast on that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. We're looking forward to this. Like I mentioned, the city of Hampton and Newport News brought this issue forward, where their city attorney determined that the way the law is currently written is inconsistently applied and perhaps unintentionally restrictive. So I will say that Delegate Ward at the General Assembly has been communicating with the folks in Hampton and Newport News, and then now that we are starting to support this effort to determine the best way forward to address this issue. So looking forward to this as well, and we'll definitely keep you in the loop on everything.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Just a follow-up on Councilman Ward. Delegate Hayes, last year, he was able to get some funding for Suffolk with some of the historic Black Cemeteries, and you might be able to connect with him.
We definitely will.
And maybe he will be able to help you get some stuff to go in your legislative comments to carry forward, try to help you get more.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I appreciate your presentation. I do have a couple of comments. I'm in full agreement with our entire legislative agenda. Randa did a great job. You guys work together, you'll be fine. A lot of these issues, of course, some of them are bigger than others, and I was wondering, I know we're supporting VML's agenda, is there anything in our package that VML, you know, would not be in agreement with that you could think of?
No, no.
So they should, okay. Of course, some of the things to me are huge, sovereign immunity is, I mean, is huge. It doesn't sound like much, but if that ever goes away, the taxpayer is going to end up picking up the tab, is what it's going to amount to, because the higher employees, especially law enforcement officers, fire and safety, you know, I would assume that we're going to have to hold them harmless, and to hold them harmless requires insurance or additional risk money, which I try to tell people all the time, the city doesn't have money. The city holds the taxpayers' money. So, you know, definitely stay on top of that, universal broadband, that seems to be coming together. We are really making strides in Suffolk, and with the regional effort, hopefully that'll come to fruition pretty quick. The Western Tidewater Regional Jail, just to clarify that, we currently have an exemption to 76.
Yes.
At 76, it all goes away.
Yes.
I've been working on this for about, I started with Chris Jones seven, eight years ago, to come up with something, because what's happened is, now this has to do with federal inmates. Everything over 76, we're required to send approximately 20 bucks an inmate back to the state. We also house state inmates. And what happens is that basically is a point of diminishing returns. The state is not really guaranteed anything because the U.S. Marshal Service can call tomorrow and say, we're not sending any federal inmates to Western Tidewater Regional Jail anymore. But because we've got the best jail in the Commonwealth, which is the truth, the U.S. Marshal Service loves the Western Tidewater Regional Jail. So not only do we get local federal inmates out of Norfolk, but we'll also get federal inmates out of North Carolina. So that's pushed that number way up. We're actually remitting more back to the state than they're supposed to be paying us. So the idea was, at 76, we're exempt to 76, we will pay them through 1/30. So they get the first bucks until we get to 1/30.
Yep.
And then everything over 1/30, we would keep. Therefore, it's not a diminishing return to us, we're not getting punished for a job well done.
Sure.
And that's, and I know we've got a meeting with Senator Lucas, but I would also touch base with Delegate Jenkins-Brewer and Senator Cosgrove for sure.
Absolutely.
And if anybody needs, you know, any explanation on anything, let me know. I was hoping that Senator Lucas was supposed to be working well. I guess he did work with us last year, but maybe we'll get a little bit more done. But I appreciate it, and fight hard.
Absolutely, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll note one thing, we've already had a conversation with Senator Norman as well, who is looking to be helpful, and I should have noted, the fiscal impact of that money we do send to the state in 2020 was 1.88 million.
Yes.
It's not a small number.
And keep in mind, of the Western Tidewater Jail, everything is proportionate between the jail, in the jail with the city of Suffolk, Franklin, and Alawak. And so it's based on inmate population, so 70% of that money is Suffolk money.
Yes, yes, sir.
And we're talking about a minimum of $500,000 or $600,000, so, like I said, fight hard.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, our next staff report is an employee leave balance and policy review. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your November 3 meeting, a report was requested on city employees' leave balances. Robin Wynn, Director of Human Resources, will provide that staff report at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I am here to present, actually, my purpose this evening is to review or provide an update on our annual MPTO leave programs, and also to, sorry, skip a slide here, and to also recommend a consideration for council to allow employees to carry over leave into the next calendar year. As you may or may not know, the city of Suffolk has two different leave programs. One is a paid time off program designed for those employees hired after January the 1st and January 1 of 2014. And the other program is the annual leave program, which was in place prior to the PTO program, that was, is designed for employees hired before December 31 of 2013. In both programs, employees actually accrue leave each paid period. This year, we are, for a number of reasons, employees have not been able to take leave again, and as of 11/16/2021, it is projected that employees, that all full-time employees will lose over 17,000 hours before the end of the year. So for this evening, we are respectfully asking for council's consideration and converting carryover hours that are above the maximum accumulation to our recognition leave program. The recognition leave program allows the employee to continue to use their leave hours, but the program does not create a financial liability or expense for the city. And then I might note that during a future council meeting, it is our intent to ask for additional consideration to change the maximum accumulation hour. for additional consideration to change the maximum accumulation hours in the future. This will allow employees to certainly accrue more hours before reaching that maximum so that they're not in a point of possibly losing time. So with that, that is my very brief presentation. Are there any questions?
Question comment, Councilman Fossett.
Yes, sir.
Am I on, me? Okay, sir, I didn't know you.
Yeah, Councilman Fossett.
Let me go. I appreciate that. A couple of things here.
Yes, sir.
One, I think it's a little bit unexcusable that they didn't get to use some of that leave. I think that that could have been mitigated a lot more. And I understand COVID, this, COVID, that, but, you know, it's, to me, it's time management. And time management should have provided for some of these employees to get some of that leave off. The other part of this is, an employee that accumulates this leave and decides that he's gonna, he or she is going to roll over and retire, they're entitled to get paid for that leave. That's a substantial amount of money that's going to be in addition, that's coming from somewhere, other than the normal payout that they would have got. I really have some concerns with this. I think there should have been a cap max completely across the board of how much you could carry over, because it just opens the gate. And what are we going to do, you have not provided a plan, to me, to tell me how you're going to get these hours down? These hours are going to continue to grow? And without the time management in here, we've got the same problem we're going to have next year. And therefore, it's just not comprehensible for me. I just, I'm afraid to vote and allow you to carry this stuff over because you haven't shown how you're going to mitigate the problem. And I have a great concern with that, because this is, leave is accumulated to money and dollars.
Agreed.
I mean, we're facing other issues here with the comp plan that's going to create a lot of money. So somebody's going to have to give me some answers before I'm going to put my name on. I'm not wanting to take anything away from an employee. But it seems to me that some of these hours could have been drawn down. And I just can't figure out how we as a city can allow this to continue to happen. And you come in here and ask for this, and yet you haven't provided a plan of how we're going to execute, and how we're going to get these hours down, and are we going to have to pay these employees if they retire extra months right over? And they're going to get paid, because they're entitled to the leave. You can't not pay them for it. So that's an additional cost that's coming from somewhere in the budget. So I really got some issues with this, and I probably got a whole lot more questions about this.
Understood.
But this has not settled well with me. This is not. And, you know, you hope that they wouldn't lose it, I know that.
Absolutely.
But what's the answer? Carry over and then hope they take it the next 12 months or six months before it rolls again? I'm not, I'm not getting this. But thank you for coming up and giving your presentation.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennet.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wynn, for your report. And I think that's just the beginning of it. You didn't give us a follow. You're just telling us that you were working toward coming up with what you would recommend to us as far over the amount of time for carryover. And I'm sure that you will be very strict with what you decide to recommend to the manager to bring back on behalf of the employees, to make sure that they're being treated fairly. And you will, I feel that we'll probably have a certain number, a cap, on what you would recommend, where it would not be open-ended, where any person could carry over so many hundreds of hours a year. And I can understand that if, with a cap being on it. I know in my place of employment, previous employment, we did have where we could carry over, but it was a cap. So when we had a heavy workload, people could not take the vacation, then we compromised with them because they was trying to do something to help the company. So therefore, we owed them some back in return. So I think it's a great thing that we are able to work with the employees that has dedicated their time to us when we needed them. Then if they, rather than to lose their vacation, I think we should do everything we can to make sure that we do have, work with them as far as not losing a whole bunch of vacation because they are trying to fulfill the obligation to keep the city whole and clean and safe. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Can we get on the screen, the last slide?
This side, this one, sir?
Let me see that one. I think that's the one. Recognition leave is not compensatable at the time of departure from the city of Suffolk. What, where are we on that?
Councilman, if I could step in here real quick.
Thank you.
One of the themes here, what the thought was, you know, we have a lot of hours that have not been utilized, obviously. We have a lot of folks, we're short in our public safety areas, a lot of people worked overtime, a lot of those, a lot of hours there. But the key is here, we do have caps in our code. If you work 20, 20 years or more, you have 384 hours you can carry, I mean, is your max. Anything above that, you lose. What we're saying in here, instead of having annual leave, and I'm taking the older, the annual leave part here, because I know it better, because I'm older. But the point there being is, if you convert the annual leave to recognition leave, it's not a cash payout at that point, but you still don't lose the leave. So if someone retired, they'd get paid out for any annual leave they had, but they wouldn't get paid out for recognition. And that was one of our mitigation points there, concerned with the dollar value. The second thing is, is as we look at the compensation package, as we bring that back to you, we talked about some of our benefits too. And this, I think, falls under that category. We would like to look at those caps, because it's, if we get in situations like that, maybe a little bit more room on the cap could help some folks. Well, help everyone, but could help some folks. But I would point out, we do have some departments that have been running pretty thin here over the last couple of years, and it's created this issue. And we rolled it over last year. It did create probably a little bit more of a snowball effect here that we have, and I think that was Councilman Fossett's point a minute ago, is a snowball effect on this. But if we convert it to, from annual to recognition, we address the big fiscal impact. It still provides the opportunity for folks to use their leave. Now, again, if they're using that leave, what happens to the annual leave they're accumulating, we could be back in the same issue. But again, we've had a lot of folks who've done overtime. We've had a lot, and if we're short in some areas, whether it's the front line on solid waste collection, or if it's in the police department, or some other department that we're a little, have been running a little thin on, people have been working to try to keep up. And we've got a lot of folks who are in that situation. 17,000 hours is quite a few hours.
Quite a few.
But if we want to take other options is, do we want to share the loss or something like that? I mean, we can look at different, addressing this in different ways. Or we have the other, the far side would be staying within the code, as written today. But we've been getting requests up, coming up to me over the last several months. And then we had that conversation last year, and until last meeting, it was an opportunity to bring back and discuss it. And so I had Robin work on it, you know, everyone's been sort of pointing at Robin, and I was sitting next to Rob. So I wanted her to catch all the heat here. So that's how we looked at it, was one way to eliminate the fiscal impact was converted to recognition leave. And not everyone's going to retire in that, next year, but still, there is that fiscal impact out there, which Councilman Fossett was addressing.
Councilman Johnson.
Al, wouldn't it make sense that we wait and look at this at the same time we do the compensation plan, because this is really going to be part of the compensation study? I know at this time, we've got people out there that, but when people are working overtime, we are paying them overtime, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's legally, we pay overtime. So the point being, are we going to give them this time that they've lost because we don't have enough people here covered all of it? So I'm not sure how the public will feel about this, because in the real world, sorry, in the public world, we don't get compensated, we just keep working. And I don't have a problem with looking at and trying to come up with a plan for these people, but it seems to me it should be done when we're doing the compensation study, and all of it needs to be presented at the same time, whether it be putting more caps, less caps. Sorry, that's just my opinion.
Well, the cap part of it, we were going to bring back at that time.
Yes.
That was our goal, was bringing, discuss that, caps at that time. What we're talking about now is between here and the end of the year, do we forfeit the 17,000 hours or not? And the sooner that decision make, the people can make, if they're going to get forfeited, then, you know, we got to operate the city, and we got to know where we're at.
Councilman Fossett.
Because folks, staff is going to want to take as much as they can.
Just one thing, and you talked about the recognition. It's basically almost the same thing as comp time. The problem is, is you get the recognition, you roll this over to recognition, their regular leave continues to accumulate. That doesn't stop.
No.
So now you've got two problems here. One, you've got to get the recognition leave off, and now you're continuously building the annual leave up, and there you go again. You've got two problems. So what are you going to do? Turn that over after the cap and go back into recognition leave, keep building this, and you're still building annual? This is a train wreck. This is a train wreck. It's not a solution. It's, that's where the problem's at, I'm sorry to say. It's going to be an issue, no matter how you cut this thing. And you can't get it off between now and the end of the year.
No.
It's impossible. And where are we at with the hiring process? Why we have all these gaps? I don't see a lot of advertisements on the board for jobs, yet we got people out here that we don't have to fill these positions, we're shorthanded, can't we get them? What's all the scenario here? And this all plays into this annual leave issue. And the problem is, the employee is going to take the heat for it, and is going to take the blunt of it. And that's the sad part about it, because there's no easy way out.
Well, just to correct one thing, we are hard, recruiting very hard, so I don't want to get any impression out there in the public that we're not recruiting.
I'm not implying, I'm not implying you not to, I'm implying that what you just said, that you're shorthanded. And that's been the case now for the last months. So I don't know where the process is at. Is it slow, when I get into people? I don't know. But if we don't get the manpower up, we're going to continue to have annual leave problems and recognition leave problems, we're never going to get to the end of it.
I've got one question.
Yes.
Explain to me, the recognition time is just kind of like a recognition leave, like a personal day? I mean, how does, how exactly, what is exactly recognition leave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Either one.
Okay. I wasn't sure if he was going to do that. So recognition leave is just like, it's a regular day off. It allows, the whole point of the recognition leave allocation is so that those hours would go into the employee's account, for lack of better words, and then that employee could then continue to take that time if they so needed it. They can take it for personal, sick, whatever they needed to use it for. But that leave would be available for them, those, that bank of hours would be available for them.
So you would just be given, to Councilman Fossett's point, you're just giving them additional leave in addition to their annual leave. So really, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish in the short term, in the short term, is 17,000 roughly plus.
Yes.
Worth of annual leave that maybe your employees did not take because you were shorthanded, and they stepped up to the plate to work. And to Councilman Johnson's point, I understand what you're saying, you know, they're not doing it free. But at the same time, what you're talking about is really not more money. It's just giving them the latitude to collect it in the following year. So that money could be accrued, it's within the same budget, you just roll it into next year. So what we're doing is giving them the latitude to draw on the annual leave they would have gotten in the prior year anyhow, but they chose not to take because they stepped up and they were working. So in the short term, I mean, personally, I don't have any problem with that. And I would figure, I'm just, I just, in my little pea brain, I figured that's like $500,000 or $600,000. I just figured it, average hourly rate and 17,000 hours. But anyhow, it's not really costing us anything, other than, we just, it's not costing us anything, we're just rolling it, unless you want to count the overtime, we're just rolling it into the next year. But that money would have been, would have been expensed, accrued in the current year. So we just roll it over and give them the latitude to draw upon that in the next 12 months, all of it.
Next month, yes.
And then, at least it gives you some breathing room, and then you can come up with a long-term solution if you want to. So personally, I don't have any problem with that. Can, what's the?
I'm sorry, Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you. What's the breakdown on a per person in the city? Is that a two days of extra recognition days or three days?
No, what would we be, what we would actually put into their bucket, if you will, are any hours over the maximum accumulation. So if the person, so I'll give an example. So if John has 200 hours and his accumulator is 180, the only thing that would go into that bucket, so his maximum is 180, so the only thing that we would put in that bucket is the additional 20 hours. So it really just depends on that person, you know, years of service and where they are.
The only downside I could see to it is that if this additional annual leave is rolled over into next year, it gets close to the end of the year, and there's an abundance of annual leave up there, and everybody decides to take it at the same time, unless you made allowances to pay it out anyhow.
And we've not discussed that, no.
Pay out part of it, but it's just something to think about. If this annual leave keeps accumulating and nothing happens between now and the end of the year, and somebody says, wow, I got this many hours, you know, I'll go ahead and take a month off. And if everybody decides to do that around the same time, now you're really going to be shorthanded. So I would also look into an option where maybe they don't actually have to take it, and we still pay out some money. And that way, everybody keeps working, and it still might cost them. Hmm?
Probably go and pay it out and bring it down to the word of the law.
Yeah.
And then let's start over, because we're not going to.
Catch up, I'm telling you, this is.
Well, no, no, and that's my point. If there's that much annual leave, but for right this minute, I don't have any problem going with the option, and we can look at it, let, you know, Ms. Wynn and the manager look at it, be twined in, and come up with some options that they think might, would work. So the employees get to kind of stay whole, and we're rewarding the ones that have stepped up to put the time in, to do the overtime. And, you know, I know from personal experience, having employees and lots of time, I've got employees I'd be glad to pay time and a half to, and they still don't want to work. I mean, I got technicians that, you know, I've told them, come in on Saturday, and I'll pay you time and a half for what you want to make, and they said, no, I'd rather stay home.
That's right.
You know, so I understand where you're coming from. You have certain employees that are willing to make a sacrifice, they're not doing it strictly for the money, you know, that you can count on. And I think those people should be rewarded to the extent that we can, as far as appreciating what they've done, so take a look at it.
All right, we certainly will do that.
And if you have any other comments.
We certainly will do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, where are we? We are down to motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for December 1, 2021, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Torrington Road over Kilby Creek rehabilitation project, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fossett?
Prove to approve.
Vice Mayor Butler Barlow, a second. Any discussion in the motion? Here or none, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennet.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for December 1, 2021, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition. receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Longstreet Lane over Somerton Creek Bridge replacement project, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Approve.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a joint meeting of City Council and the School Board for Wednesday, December 1, 2021, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order.
So move.
Vice Mayor Bennett? The motion, Councilman Fawcett?
I want to make a different motion.
Different motion?
I want to move to disapprove.
And we've got a motion to not approve the joint meeting?
We have a motion to approve. I just was.
Well, we don't have, okay, so we don't.
Motion to.
Well, we don't have a motion yet. Say, first, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Second.
You second the motion to approve. Now, Councilman Fawcett, you can make a substitute motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion to disapprove this motion and move this to after the first of the year, to allow a newly elected member to be able to attend this meeting. We would do the same thing if we were up here and we just had new council members done. I don't see the urgency to do this on December 1, well, we can't put this off to the first meeting in January, so that is my motion to, to move this to the first meeting in January.
Okay, we have a substitute motion from Councilman Fawcett to move this meeting to the first meeting in January, to allow for new school board representatives to be present. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the city manager. Does this affect you in any way in the budgeting and whatever else we're doing, and what's going on there?
Well, the concept here was to have this meeting to talk about the CIP as part of the school board, and because we're moving the planning commission on December 21 with the CIP, and that was the thought process.
When does the CIP go to the planning commission?
December, I think, for some reason, I said the 21st.
Okay, so it is going to the planning commission in December?
The week before that, I believe.
Okay.
I don't have the exact date on me right now.
21st.
Okay.
21st, I am right, 21st.
Okay, Council Fawcett's made a substitute motion to move the meeting to January. Do we have a second? Not hearing a second. We have a motion on the floor from Vice Mayor Bennett for approval, with a second from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Mayor?
I know there's, I know there's a second on the floor, but here again, we're going to have a meeting with the school board collectively. The right would be for this council to allow a newly elected member to be a part of a joint meeting. The CIP meeting come up, we have all sat in a preliminary meeting and laid out what, as a council, that we have talked to the manager about for the CIP, which he has discussed with the superintendent, who should have discussed it with the school board. And therefore, what is the benefit of not allowing a newly elected school board member to attend? If that's the case, the next time we have an election, we ought to not take the same consideration for a newly elected member of this council. I think it's unjust to a newly elected person to not have the opportunity. We all want to give everybody opportunities up here, but all of a sudden, we don't want to give an opportunity for somebody to participate, and that, I think, is just not appropriate.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Mayor, I call for the question, and we had a discussion, and the question was called for.
Can't call, can't call for the question, and get it put that in a form of a motion, but let's see if we have any further discussion.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Just to make a comment, I support what Roger's saying here, but the truth of the matter is, she's not on board until, it's January 1, and she comes on board. And there's no reason she can't attend the meeting and sit in the audience and be, I mean, it's a public forum. And I do agree, but I think since we need the information, city manager does to move forward, I don't think we really have too many options. Just my opinion.
Any other discussion of the motion? Here or none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
No.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Fawcett voting in opposition.
Okay, we now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, where are the non-agenda speakers? And if so, please review the guidelines.
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speaker" shall limit their remarks to services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Johnny Edwards, 1913 Airport Road, representing self regarding redistricting. Our next speaker is Garrett Waters, 105 Bad Town Road, representing self regarding current events.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen on City Council. My name is Garrett Waters. I reside at 105 Bad Town Road in Suffolk, Virginia. I did have a lot of stuff written down, but I'm going to kind of keep it short for you guys this evening, which you're probably somewhat thankful for. I served in the world's greatest navy for 22 years, and in that time, I studied communicable disease. So yes, we're going to touch upon COVID here a little bit. The vaccine mandate leveled by the Biden administration has been halted by a federal court due to gross constitutional concerns. In light of this, how is the city of Suffolk, or any other entity, either public, private, city or state, able to enforce any type of vaccine, any type of mask? Has anyone asked the doctor from the Department of Public Health what the minimum thread count of the mask needs to be in order to mitigate the spread of COVID? I've asked that multiple times in front of you all here. I don't think anyone's ever asked the folks from Virginia Department of Health that question. Does it concern anyone that if the Pfizer vaccine is approved, then why are we still using Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna? Does it concern anyone that we've had more COVID deaths in October 2021 than we did compared to October of 2020, where there was no vaccine available? Are you aware that the CDC had to admit that out of the approximately 149 million Americans who are believed to have attained natural immunity, there has been zero cases, absolutely zero cases of asymptomatic spread of COVID? OSHA came out today and announced that they will not be enforcing any regulations in regards to the Biden administration's rather draconian demands. What is the response of the city of Suffolk? When I pointed out the law at the last meeting that actually delineates that wearing a mask in public in the Commonwealth is unlawful, the very person charged with enforcement of laws laughed at me. I just chalked it up as to a secretary having a gun. Did you happen to notice that 75% of the room cleared out on your last vote? Not this past room, but a couple of ones before that. 75% of this very room just cleared right out. Part of that is because you had concerned citizens coming up, saying what they had to say, and it didn't matter. You guys couldn't delay that 30 days to check out flooding issues in the different areas? You just wanted to try to placate people and say, you know, when you, when you come up here, we've had folks come up, they're still getting EMF radiation in their house. There's still sick people. There's still car accidents all over the city of Suffolk. There's crimes all over the city of Suffolk. So I just, I have a couple of questions. Is it funny when BB&amp;T gets robbed by a person wearing a mask? Granted, wearing a mask in public is unlawful. I wonder if that's funny. Is it funny when a woman gets pistol whipped in the SunTrust parking lot by a person wearing a mask? Is that funny? Is it funny when a woman gets carjacked at gunpoint on Bank Street, right next to the courthouse, the person wearing a mask? I believe that at this point, we seem to be failing almost on every level of governance in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. I believe that the citizens of Suffolk are picking up on this. At the last meeting, we talked about all this holiday stuff, right? All these pop-up this and pop-up that. There was no mention of a Christmas parade, to where high school bands can come out and do their thing down Main Street. There was no talk of any Boy Scout or Girl Scout group being able to participate with any floats, having anything to do with anything to make people happy. And then, towards the end of the agenda, and this is what kind of really threw me off, is we have employees of the city of Suffolk that have 17,000 hours owed to them, owed to these people because of either being short-staffed or overworked, or you name it, right? And we're going to just try to placate this? What this is going to cause, if folks are putting in so much time and effort to keep Suffolk safe, and Suffolk clean, and Suffolk moving forward, and you don't reward these people for their hard efforts, they're going to leave. The employees that you have now are going to leave. This is even before we get into all the violence going on in the schools, the expired food being presented to kids for schools, rotten milk, moldy fruit, you name it. It's really quite a shame. I'm going to tell you, I'll be at the next City Council meeting, I promise you, and I hope I don't get as discombobulated as I was this evening. What a shame it was for me to sit in here and watch how all of this transpired this evening. I really hope, myself included, when we get home this evening and we get ready for bed.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
We look in the mirror for a little bit of self-reflection. We deserve better.
More speakers? Can I, sorry? All right, thank you. We now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
I will defer this evening to the city manager, as he has an additional item for council's consideration.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor members of council, as you're aware, we have a governor-appointed representative that sits on the SIPSA board, representing the city of Suffolk, Mr. David Arnold. His term is expiring, per the guidelines or the requirements of the board, and we need to fill his slot. I have spoken with a gentleman, Mr. Ross Green, who works with David, who's interested in filling that slot. He is a local attorney, fills the void that we need, as Mr. Arnold's attorney on that board, and would recommend to council that we put forth his name to the governor's office for nomination to the SIPSA board.
So we need a motion? To, Councilman Goldberg?
I move that we accept Mr. Green as our representative.
Got a motion, Mr. Green? Councilman Fawcett?
I'll second it.
Got a second from Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of the motion? Here or none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And just to clarify, that would be to submit the name, because the governor actually makes the appointment, it's not a council. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This time, we'll ask if media and community relations director Diana Klink has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Public Works continues to be busy with a number of projects underway and more to come. They wanted to bring to your attention the fact that a major transportation project on Carolina Road, State Route 32, will begin November 29. The city's contractor will replace the Carolina Road Bridge over Cypress Swamp. The replacement will include a new 100-foot-long concrete span along with asphalt approaches. It is necessary to replace the existing bridge due to functional obsolescence and weight restrictions of the existing structure. The contractor anticipates reopening late July 2022. Public Works will continue to keep the public informed about road closure dates and detour information. More information on this project can be found on the Public Works website. As a reminder, Public Works will host an open-form public hearing to discuss proposed drainage improvements in the Pewsville area on Tuesday, November 30, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at New Hope Baptist Church, located at 4260 Pewsville Road. This is for phase two of the project, which will include installing an enclosed pipe system down John Street, as well as a stormwater pond between Queen Street and Armstrong Avenue. Staff will be located around the room and will be available to discuss the project in detail, one-on-one. The items available at the public hearing will include design plan sheets, a public hearing brochure, information regarding the tentative project schedule, property impacts, and right-of-way relocation assistance information, and the approved environmental document. Comments can be recorded at the meeting or submitted until December 30 to the Department of Public Works. More information and comment sheets are available on the City of Suffolk project website. The city of Suffolk received excellent news earlier today when we learned that we have once again been awarded a distinguished budget presentation award by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, known as GFPA, for the 12th straight year for our 2021-2022 fiscal year operating and capital budget. The award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive this award, the city of Suffolk had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines assess how well the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive this award. The 2021 Suffolk holiday season officially begins this Friday, November 19, with a hometown kickoff. This year's grand illumination ceremony will take place virtually on the City of Suffolk YouTube channel, and will also air live at 6:00 p.m. on the city's municipal channel. The event will begin with a message from Mayor Mike Dooman, followed by a musical performance from The King's Ringer, a hand-bell choir from Suffolk Christian Church, and will conclude with the lighting of our 32-foot holiday tree. You can watch it live Friday, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at www.youtube.com/sufficva and on Spectrum Channel 190. In observance of Thanksgiving, City of Suffolk offices will close at 12:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 24, and remain closed Thursday, November 25, and Friday, November 26. Normal operations will resume on Monday, November 29, at 8:30 a.m. Trash regularly scheduled for pickup on Thursday, November 25, will be collected on Friday, November 26. Trash regularly scheduled for pickup on Friday, November 26, will be collected on Saturday, November 27. TFC Recycling will also follow the holiday schedule, with Thursday, November 28, excuse me, 25, regular recycling routes being collected on Friday, November 26, and the Friday, November 26, regularly scheduled recycling routes being collected on Saturday, the 27. Businesses located in the downtown Business Overlay District, or DBOD, will have their collection day run on the regular schedule on Friday, November 26. Suffolk Transit will not be in operation on Thursday, the 25, due to the holiday. Suffolk Transit will run as scheduled on Wednesday, November 24, Friday, November 26, and Saturday, November 27. The Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park will debut on Friday, November 26. This new annual tradition debuted last year and features a drive-through light display which will be illuminated from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. each night, except for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Attendees can view a free exhibit of five holiday light themes from the warmth and comfort of your car. As an early save-the-date-for-the-holiday season, be sure to mark Saturday, December 11th, as the date for the Suffolk Holiday Parade. This year's theme is "Home for the Holidays," and the parade will kick off at 7:00 p.m. that evening in downtown Suffolk. And we want to remind our residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine that they are encouraged to visit vaccinate.virginia.gov, or contact the State Call Center at 1-877-829-4682 to find out a vaccination location convenient to them. And with that, we leave you with our main number, 514-4000, and the many ways that we reach out to our residences and businesses, and we wish you a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klink. We'll now go to announcements and comments from council. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I'd like to thank city manager, Mr. Lewis, Public Works Director, staff, for the stop signs on Brook, Batter, and Kilby. Now, all we need is some traffic enforcement. Great idea, guys. With that, I'd like to say goodnight.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also be brief. One, I want to, you know, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It's coming up before our next meeting, and I wish everyone have a great time and think about the ones that do not have, and do what you can to help the ones that do not have. I was in a meeting this morning with the Workful Service Group, and something was brought to my attention, and I thought I'd bring it to the city's attention. Franklin, Southampton County, Windsor are all putting in a bus service, or trying to put a bus service in, and they want to be able to tie into our bus service and the bus service of all of Hampton Roads. I thought I might just put a bug in your ear to take a look at that, maybe make the contacts, and see what we can do to blend in with them and help them out and move people around a little bit. But I don't know if they have one already, or they're just working on trying to put one together, but I just thought I'd let you know that. So with that, I say goodnight, Mayor.
Councilman Werg?
Yes, I'd like to give congratulations to Northern Shore Elementary School for the national award they have received. I think it's very exciting that I have a lot of connections in the Northern Shores Elementary Schools. Three of my children have been there over the years, so it felt real good to know that they are achieving good things in education. Also, I'd like to, we went on a, a couple of, Mayor and myself was there, we went on a little tour around the school, and what you realize is that, you see the building, but once you go inside, you see hands-on, the kids are having a good time, and they are so joyful, got so much energy. But one of the things that we did see is a couple of things with the gym knee fixing. Been there for 20-some years or more. And what disturbed me is the fact that we have all them trailers back there, and some of the trailers not in the best condition, but nevertheless, the kids are so excited, and just to see them participate in this work with the teachers and how joyful they are. But what I'm getting to is that, you know, there been a problem with them trailers over the years, even before I was on council, so that's one of the things I would like to see taken care of, that somehow we can eliminate some of them trailers, because like Superintendent Gordon and Chairman Buck, Superintendent Gordon was explaining to me, and some of the principal, they got, the principal there, I forgot her name, but she's got so much energy, and she loved doing, working with the kids. You know, when they have emergency, you know, how they gotta respond to that, when the child, they go to the bathroom, all these type of things they were sharing with us, and it bring the light that we got to try to limit it, some of them faults that it can be caused. And they even said that, Dr. Gordon had mentioned to me that they had a homeless person living underneath the trailer, so that really got next to me. So I just wanted to see how we can help eliminate some of the trailers from some of the schools that had trailers. That'd be a good mission for us to do in the next 10, 20 years, maybe we can get that done instead of just passing the buck or not doing nothing at all. I think that elected officials, we should try to concentrate, if one thing, making it easier for the kids in school, education, how we know how important that is. Another thing that what happened was, me and a couple of elected officials, along with Zoe Ministry, we went and shared a community, I think it was Saratoga.
Am I right? Saratoga?
Okay, so we went, and they went and talked to some of the people there, and they had a great response, and some of the people did talk. And one thing they can try to find out is what are the problems they have and how they can help. And I appreciate the police chief, he was there, and a couple of sheriffs, they was there. Like I said, it's a difference when you go into the community and you see what some of the problems are, and some of the people really want to express and share with them what's going on. And they sit back, and like they said, one lady said, she had a lot of energy, she had said that, when the next time you're coming? Six months from now? See, that's what I'm saying, we start things and stop. And one of my concerns was, and well, Pastor Simmons said, no, we back a week or two. So like I said, I think all, everyone that showed up there, and I think that when we left, all of us felt it was a worthwhile walk, to go in the community, hands-on, and see for yourself what's going on, and the people that want good things in all communities, and that's just need a little help or somebody to recognize they there and they needs. And I also like to say, like, one of my constituents says, I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving. God bless.
Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and the week coming up as well, and from the Ag community, I'd like to say we are thankful so far for a very safe and abundant harvest, and we will be really thankful when it's actually finished, and that hopefully is on the horizon for most of the folks in the area. I want to mention that I was at the Greater Oakland Chuck Tuck Civic League meeting on Monday night, and I just want to thank the members of that Civic League for their persistence, for their faithfulness, and for all the good things that they do in the community. They're working on Angel Tree Project for December, and will be having a Christmas gathering, and just always appreciate those folks coming out and keeping me informed on their concerns. I also wanted to mention two food access programs, not to steal the Vice Mayor's thunder, but one that kicked off today at Corey Park, that's a community refrigerator that the residents at Corey Park can access, you know, if they're out of something, they can run down and get some milk, or eggs, or produce, and that's going to be maintained by the facility, and that's a joint project between Healthy Suffolk, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, and Centerra Obesi, among other organizations. And there's another one that is going to be held tomorrow, that is a program called Loaves and Fishes, that's community groups in the Chuck Tuck Oakland area, churches and community organizations. They're actually distributing food once a month in the community, and this has been ongoing since the summer, and the one for tomorrow, of course, will be Thanksgiving themed, but this will be something that will be done every month, as long as we can sustain it. So just wanted to highlight those two things, providing some Thanksgiving cheer for some of our neighbors, and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'm gonna be brief as well. I just want to remind everyone that as we are celebrating our Thanksgiving traditions and spending times with our families, there are lots and lots of people out there that are working and supporting us, city people, local people, hospitals, that aren't able to do that. So appreciate the fact that we have a wonderful holiday coming up, that we can be with our families and be with our friends, but there are others that are working around us, so remember them, and remember the people of this world that have lost someone. It's been a tough four to six weeks. I'm kind of in the funeral business sometimes, and there's a lot of people that have passed away recently. So take note, make a phone call, call people and tell them you're thinking about them. A lot of people are going through a tough time right now. So with that, I'll say thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback on some of the comments, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, I hope they have a safe holiday. Please slow down so we can have a nice holiday. People have a tendency to still be driving a little radical out there. I also want to thank this council for all the comments, phone calls, on the passing of my sister last week. I really do appreciate it. I can't tell you how much I appreciate each and every one of you for getting in touch with me and discussing it with me. We had a good meeting tonight, we had a lot of differences and comments, but it's all good, it's all part of the democracy, so therefore, we will see you on December 1st, and thank you, and again, have a safe holiday.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you.
Get your speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be too long. First, I would like to say, really, thanks to Healthy Suffolk, and I tell you, that was great today, attending Corey Park, and when I got there, those seniors was lined up waiting for that pantry to open, and Healthy Suffolk was there, Centerra, Suffolk Centerra was there to help as well. And actually, it's good, where in the people are running short of things like butter, milk, or eggs, or some, it's not like they can go down and just fill up the grocery cart, but if they're running short of something that they need right away, they have a refrigerator, and they have fruit and everything, they can go down and get something that they can carry over. So I think what they are doing is great, people are very excited about it, and Redevelopment Housing Authority, they were there, and they really have done a great job working, partnering with the Healthy Suffolk. Also, Councilman Ward, it was West End, that's where we walked. It was a mix-up, because Reverend Simmons thinking they were going to Saratoga, but that's supposed to be the next area we are supposed to be going. It was Welland Street, Smith Street, and Wilson Street were the streets that we walked on, and a lot of responses, Councilman Ward's stated. People was glad to see us walking out there and showing the support that they was hoping that would make a change in their community, and it really needed, I think. And with Thanksgiving coming up, I know this year probably be more families getting together than it has in the last year. I still think we need to be safe and be cautious getting together. The virus is still rampaging out there, it's not over, and we, my family, all of us have had our shots and our boosted and all, but we still are being very cautious with our lives and our daily activities, so please be careful and be cautious, and hope everyone that's traveling have a safe travel, and it just, people really not giving much respect out there in driving, so you have to drive for yourself and the other person as well. So I hope everyone have a safe holiday, and thanks, Mr. Manager and Ms. Winn, for your presentation about the lead time. I think that makes some of the employees know that we are concerned about their well-being and welfare, and trying to be supportive of them. And with that, I would say good evening.
All righty, just, I'm gonna start by, I attended the Suffolk Fire and Rescue Awards and Recognition Ceremony on the 4th, and I've been to quite a few of those, I think it was the largest one, most well-attended function that they have had. They had, there were 10 employees that were promoted, five lieutenants, three captains, two battalion chiefs, had six people that were recognized for their retirement. What was most impressive is that there were 45, 45 new members in fire safety, which was more than impressive to me, and then just, just an unbelievable amount of different awards for employees that had performed beyond the call of duty. The Fire Chiefs Award of Excellence, Medal of Valor, Medal of Honor, Medal of Merit, Certificate of Commendations, Unit Citations, Firefighter of the Year, Paramedic of the Year, Officer of the Year, just to mention a few. I want to congratulate all those individuals on their well-deserved recognition. Councilman Fawcett, I mean, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Ward mentioned a little visit to Northern Shores Elementary, taking legislator to school, and, you know, we got a little tour of Northern Shores, and I love elementary schools. I mean, they're like the best. My wife was an elementary school teacher, she taught kindergarten. That was a long time ago, I can tell you she couldn't do it now, even kindergarten. But I love little kids, they're like a big ball of clay, you know, and they can be molded into just about anything. You know, they tell you what they think, you know, they, you know, they're 100% truthful, they got no agendas, no prejudice, no preconceived notions, no nothing. And I'm glad, if nothing else, I haven't been in that environment in a while, going into a few of those classrooms, and, you know, I was a better person for it, I felt really good for the rest of the day because I had that opportunity. We did take a look at the trailer situation, and personally, I'm glad we did, because looking at the facility study, when you look at the facility studies per se, Northern Shores is not in bad shape. But all things being equal, they do have trailers out there, and to the manager's credit, I know he's been talking to the superintendent, and are making strides in moving that project up as fast as we can with the resources that we have. And I want to thank the manager now, because I know he's been working with the superintendent on a regular basis, and we just looked at the, I guess we got a first shot at the CIP, and I think our finance director, Ms. Hanson, said it best, she said, I think this was the easiest CIP I've ever been to. But it was, it was clear, everything was right, everything was right on time, as far as what we're doing. You know, I know we've got a process to go through, and it's a long way from being finalized, but the initial presentation, and then we got our meeting in December with the school system, and hopefully with the communication that the managers had with the superintendent, everybody will kind of be on the same page, as they say, with them understanding that we are willing to do what we can do with the resources that we have, but this city has a lot of needs. And to be honest with you, the city really doesn't have that much on it, I mean, we got to finish the library, that's a pretty big deal, and we got some other projects that are, that are going to get done, but anyhow, I think everybody will be pleasantly surprised with, I mean, satisfied with what the city manager's whipped up for us. Sister Cities, I went to their annual meeting last night, they haven't had one in a couple of years, and one of the things they talked about, and I thought it was a great idea, was, you know, they want to start really promoting the legacy of Amadeo Obesi and Planters Peanut. And when you stop and think about it, you know, I think the Planters Peanut is like number five on the recognized brandings, or icons, or whatever you want to call them, in like the whole world, or maybe at least the United States. In the world, in the world. Councilman Goldberg says it is the world, that's like the whole world. Okay, and it's right here in Suffolk. I mean, that's where it came about, in Suffolk. So, you know, them really maybe getting the ball rolling, and then also us working collectively with them, and whatever type of public-private partnerships that we can do, as far as tourism is concerned, and creating a planters museum of some type, or, you know, and it could involve some other organizations we have in some other facilities that we're working with now. I don't want to put too much out there, because I don't know what's going to happen, but, you know, it was a great meeting and a good presentation, I appreciate the invite to that. And that's all I got. I do want to wish everybody, like everybody else, a very happy and safe holiday, Thanksgiving holiday, and take a moment to reflect on all those things, you know, that we do have. And with that, my quote is from Oprah Winfrey, who doesn't need any introductions, and I think I've used this quote before at Thanksgiving, because it's one of the better Thanksgiving quotes, and that is, in my opinion, be thankful for what you have, you'll end up having more. If you concentrate on what you don't have, you will never, ever have enough. So be thankful for what you've got, and appreciate what you have, and good things will come. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Fawcett, and a second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion of motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.